...in the staff and the administration of the zoning ordinance and to make decisions in such matters. This is an open and informal meeting and will -- is currently being recorded. The board members have received a copy of the agenda, staff reports, and recommendations. Copy of the agenda, staff reports, and recommendations are available with the public in the trays in my far left. We are anticipating a full seven-member board, so I'm going to introduce everybody that's going to be here. Starting my far right, we have Brooke Rosenberg. Next to him is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Tom Clark, Sr. On my far left will be Jake Christensen. Next to him will be Mel Penns. Next to him is Linda Westergaard. My name's Bill Gray. Representing City Legal today, a good friend of ours, when I first started was the City Legal representative, is Roger Brown. Representing City Staff, we have Eric Lundie, City Planner. Bert Drost, City Pioneer. Sue Ann Donovan, Zoning Enforcement Officer. And our newest TV star, Manny Choribio, City Planner. Sorry Manny, you look good on TV. The Board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts as determined by the Board demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief have been satisfied, then the Board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the Board must deny the relief. All speakers are requested to focus their comments upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law have been satisfied. Each appeal will be announced in order and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the Board or otherwise identified. All speakers are requested to speak from the podium over here on my right and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. The applicant or representative of the applicant is allowed to speak first and then will be allowed 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone else present in support of the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed five minutes each to present his or her comments. The applicant then will be allowed three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. The meeting will then be closed to public comment and the Board will make a decision. That decision and the reason will be announced. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the Board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The decisions of this Board can only be appealed to the Polk County District Court. If you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this Board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the District Court within 30 days of the filing of the Board's decision and order. If you believe that the zoning regulations applied by this Board are wrong, you may petition the City Council to change those regulations. All material or otherwise -- written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. If you have cell phones on out there, we ask that you either turn them off or put them on vibrate because they are very disruptive to the process as we go through it. We'll be taking a short break around the 3:00, 3:30 timeframe and we're kind of under the gun because the historic Board is going to be meeting at 5:30, so we appreciate everybody if we can get you moved through and satisfactorily taken care of, we'd appreciate that. As I mentioned, we have a consent agenda that is consisted of 14 items, but we've got some changes. And Bert, would you like to go through those?
Yeah. Items one through --
Seven.
Items one through 14 are on the consent portion of the agenda, meaning they won't be discussed today unless there's somebody here to speak in opposition to those. However, we do have four items that need to be discussed briefly, so those four will come off the consent agenda, and those are number eight. The Hardee's on Merle Hay Road. We got a letter from the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association that has concerns, so we can discuss that briefly. Item number 10 is a carport addition at 904 East 29th Street. We had a neighbor concerned about a setback issue there, so we'll discuss that briefly. Item 11 is the fence within the front yard at 225 East Porter Avenue. Staff has recommended denial of that one, so that'll need to be discussed. And then item number 14 at 121 Zawort Road, a new -- or construction of a new house. I do know there's a comment card against it and somebody called and said they will be here to speak against it today, so we'll have to discuss those four.
All right. Thanks Bert. And I'll go through the rest of the items that are on the consent agenda. I want you to listen to these and if you're here to speak against any of these, let us know and then we will change them just like we did these last four. So on the consent agenda is item one, an exception at 1537 21st Street. Item two is an exception at 326 Arthur Avenue. Item three is an exception at 2624 61st Street. Item four is an exception at 2702 Hubbell. Item five is a variance at 5150 East 14th Street. Item six is an exception at 2818 46th Street. Item seven is an exception at 1200 Locust Street. Item nine is an exception and variance at 5602 Southwest 9th Street. Item 12 is a variance at 3803 Lane Wood Drive. And item 13 is an exception and variance in the vicinity of 603 Allison Avenue. Now, of those items I just read, is there anybody here to speak against those items? Anybody on the Board have any objection to any of those? And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including items one through seven, nine, 12, and 13, including the exceptions and variances requested, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. So if you're here to talk about the items that we just voted on, they've all been approved. You're welcome to sit through and watch your City Council and Parks and Recs and all the groups that are doing it, and watch your government at work, but do give a day to go get your permit, so. Thank you all.
You know, I didn't understand, there were so many things on the stuff that wasn't on the consent agenda. The staff had just said, sure, grant them the variance, sure, grant them the exceptions, you know? And I didn't understand why those weren't on the consent agenda, if people agreed to them. I would like to see the --
I mean, I think there was only, what, three items in controversy?
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may have your attention briefly, please. I am the person who had the request for item number one, and I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate your support and approval.
Well, thank you. We don't normally get that kind of response, I can guarantee you, so I want to tell you that we really appreciate that.
I'm on the City Traffic Safety Committee, so I appreciate input.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
You too. Renee Bert, let's go. Item number eight is a variance and exception at 3621 Merle Hay Road.
This site is the New Hardee's Restaurant on Merle Hay Road. They are proposing to have three wall-mounted signs. The zoning ordinance only allows them to have two, so they need two appeals, one for an exception of one extra sign and then two, a variance to the overall area of those signs. And the reason it's being discussed is we got this letter up on the screen from the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association who's concerned with the extra signage, so I'll go ahead and pass that around. Just quick overview, the Hardee's, it's the second property south of Douglas Avenue on the east side of Merle Hay Road. I believe the restaurant's either open or opening very soon. They're proposing three of these signs, one on the south side, one on the west side, and one on the north side. The one on the west side is actually already put up. They're just proposing them over the entrances. Here's a photo. You can see the one that's already up and then they would put the additional sign above the entrance on the south side and then the same on the other side of the building. On the north side, they would put an additional sign, so. I've listened to that letter from the Neighborhood Association, we only had one comment card come back and that was in support, so. Staff has recommended approval of it, subject to the two standard conditions, one that they get the sign permit for it and two, any sign shall be installed in substantial performance with the site schedule.
Questions for staff?
Question. Some of the other properties along there, do they have signs on either side of their building? You know, I understand the reason for wanting the sign because of the traffic going back and forth and it's a very busy street, people drive very fast, and you need a quick look and see.
Yeah, I do know the property just to the north of this, that recently constructed building, Mr. Polk Lay and a couple others, that did come to the Board for extra signage and then this new strip mall at the northeast corner, that also came to the Board for
Extra signage.
Bert, we recently approved some similar variances for a new Hardee's at Southwest 9th and Army Post, and I think we had some little traveling stars on that, or the traveling stars proposed for this as well?
Yes, you can see the buildings are up and they do not have the stars that we've seen on the other two restaurants.
And without, you know, truly apples to apples, they were both the Hardee's, I think we had some extra signage on that one we approved, and I think that's gone up and looks pretty good, if I recall.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Hi, I'm John McCall. I'm with Performance Sign and Design. The address is 2638 Highway F-48 West Newton, Iowa. Basically, what we're trying to do here is to get a sign on the north elevation and the south elevation to bring the light, the Hardee's there, which is, it's a very tight property, were pushed up towards the Merle Hay Road. And there's a tree to the south that covers the building quite well, and to bring out the sign would help bring out the fact that there are Hardee's there. The monument sign that they have is lower than ground, it's about eight foot overall height. The west elevation already have a sign permit submitted and approved. The north elevation, there's, what we're trying to do is hit that Douglas and Merle Hay southbound, what we're trying to do there. It's just a very tight property, you come up on it real quick, and they looked, as for identity, they're just trying to bring out the light that they're back, and they used to be there. So we're just trying to bring the fact that Hardee's is existing back there again. The image is very clean, as mentioned, as Southwest 9th, very clean, and that's what we're trying to do, we're just trying to bring back the light of Hardee's has come back.
Did you take a chance to meet with the neighborhood group and?
Negative. I don't, I didn't have that opportunity because I'm really a sign guy and I didn't really get to meet the VPs of Hardee's to see if they did, so I really can't answer that one for you.
Any other questions? Yeah, have you read the staff recommendation and is that acceptable to you?
That is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support?
Honorable Chair and Board Members, my name is Brian Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive. In looking at this site, it's going to be unique. We now have a monument sign in an area that has no monument signs. And if you're familiar with the area, it's tall signs all over and a lot of signage. And so that's the reason that the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association Board, I believe, is against it. I'm a member of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association, but I'm not here speaking for any group or any individual, just myself. In this immediate area, we have nine off-premise billboards. Two of them are digital billboards, and that one is three stories up. So can we see if this goes? There you go. So they're already competing with that distraction. If there's anything close to a monument sign in the area, it's this, and compare it to the size of the car there, that's on the corner, and yet this same location has two of those, and then on their property next to it, that's a 12 by 12 digital sign, changeable image. And we don't have a whole lot of control over anything that size and smaller. The neighbor directly to their north has that sign. Across the street, you have another huge sign. Signs on the side of buildings, across the street, Valvoline has side signs, front signs and everything. There's a subway right next to them that has huge signage. Down the street, there's Christopher's with multiple signs. And yet, at this site, we have one of the smallest monument signs I've seen because that's in their swale area that they do their stormwater area. As you can see by the van, they're about the same size, so this is going to be a tough to see as it is, but Hardee's is being a good neighbor. With their building, putting the little cloud signs on the sides really aren't, isn't going to do a whole lot, and yes, they did have a permit for the banners and everything, as you guys all know me well. So with this, this business is going to be competing with a ton of signs in that area, and it's not their fault that the city in years past didn't limit billboards in this area or go to all monument signs. This individual has spent a considerable amount of money in Des Moines. They bought the old Sonic Building on the east side and turned it into a Hardee's and they tore down the building. The south side, they tore down the very old Hardee's, and this site was owned by Imperial Properties, and if anybody knows who that is and what their used car lots can be, I was thrilled to hear a Hardee's was actually buying this site. So in closing, I think what they're asking is very fair. I think that the Merle Hay Neighborhood Board is just upset with the amount of signage in the area, not this particular site, and limiting this to their small additions really isn't going to address the problem in the area. But the great thing about the area is this is a Tiff district, which I usually have a lot of heartburn about because it costs all of us residents additional money. But if you see the engine in this area and what it's done, this is incredible, this area, and we want more. Rich Eichner, who owns the property that has the 12 by 12 digital reader in the corner one, has the old Firestone location down the way, you know, on the other side of the Verizon Building, which he's starting to develop now. He owns the old Tuffy's on the east side, next to his property. And if all of you remember the old Garcia's Building that sat there for, what, 20 years, empty looking terrible? Casey's has put a first-class gas station in there that looks tasteful and nice, so with that, I, you know, would like you to consider the staff rec and what they are asking for, and I think it's reasonable. So with that, is there any questions?
Thanks, Brian.
Been good seeing all of you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I think if we recall, because this picture's still up, it's a good reference here, the building to the north there, that kind of that three-bay building there you see in the background?
Right.
This Board gave a variance or an exception or whatever it was to allow them to build a second monument sign at the corner of Merle Hay and Douglas, besides the existing tall sign that they had. So in looking at that and comparing it to what Hardee's is asking for, I don't think Hardee's is asking for all that much. And the way Brian was very eloquent here, I was interested in his wind-up, I was waiting for what the pitch would be, but his pitch is right, I'd like to see more monument low signs like this. I think some of us have encouraged, strongly encouraged, staff and maybe the council to look at that as a citywide ordinance. I'd rather see more of this around the city as an example. So we've given some variances in the area because there was questions about exposure and being able to be seen, and I think what they're asking for here is pretty reasonable and from the Hardee's that's very close to my house that we had reviewed and given some variances on, I think it will blend in well and be an asset.
I move staff.
Second.
The only comment I've got is, I drive that every day, maybe two or three times a day, and you're right, there's a lot of, I can see why Merle Hay Neighborhood Association is upset. There is a lot of signs there, just a lot, but I don't think I'm a fast driver. I haven't had a ticket in quite a few years, so.
You're just, you know, old.
But, you know, I'll tell you what, if you're heading south on Merle Hay, and if I don't think Hardee's, turn left, I'm already at the car wash, you know, you've missed it. So I think what Brian says, unless you have that high profile up there, you're going to miss that place more times than not, so, you know, I agree. I hate to see more signage go up, but in this case, we need the business to make a go of it, and that is a rejuvenated neighborhood, we really need to keep that going, so I'm going to support it, I guess is what I was getting to. So it's been moved in seconds, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to nothing. Take a day and go get your permits.
The next item we'll discuss is number 10. It's for a carport at 904 East 29th Street. The applicant has constructed a, or is in the process of reconstructing a carport on the south side of the garage. The garage is 24 by 24. The carport here, they removed and reconstructed it, but by removing it, they lost their grandpa the rights, so they're back before this Board. So really, the only appeal for this is for an exception of 1,200 square feet over the allowed 1,000 square feet of accessory buildings that this property is allowed. The reason it's being discussed is the neighbor to the west is concerned that this garage and the carport might actually be built up to the property line. The applicant is fairly confident that it's required two feet from the property line. At this time, there's no appeal before this Board that would allow them to be any less than two feet. So I guess to appease the property owner, you could add a condition to the staff recommendation that, subject to any permit being issued for the carport, that they verify that they are in fact two feet from the property line, but.
Yeah, because that's essentially city code anyway. It's nothing that we can deviate from, so what you're saying is that we probably should have a verification that it is two feet?
That's what the neighbor to the west is asking for.
Okay.
The Board could put that condition on here if you want. Staff's just recommended approval, subject to three conditions. One, that they comply with the building code and pull the necessary permits. Two, the carport is constructed, the building materials compatible with the existing garage, including horizontal lap siding, asphalt shingles. And three, it can't be used for a home-based business unless the Board grants a special permit for such, so.
Any questions for staff? Okay Bert, thanks. Applicant or representative of the applicant? I think the only issue here is if it's two feet or not.
Just for the two feet?
Yeah.
I think it is over two feet.
There we go. So you don't have any problem with a verification then?
No.
Fantastic, okay.
Is that it?
Are there survey pins or how are we going to verify that?
I'll have a survey. I have them at this point.
And you have to have the building permit anyway to?
I will have, well, that's another disagreement I have with the fact that that carport was there and all I did by requesting my insurance company had to fix the roof, you know? And I also, by finishing it, intend on tearing those buildings down. Where we at?
Set them in the middle, right over the top of that. Yeah, right over top of the picture.
I intend on tearing that building down when I can finish this because my insurance company wouldn't allow me to keep my automobiles and anything else, you know? And I am going to do every other requirement, but without proof right now of the two-foot, you know?
Has a neighbor come over and looked and, I guess I'm wondering where does his objection come in, just from the aerial?
Comes in because I wouldn't let his car, let him move a house in across my property. So what can I tell you? He's never measured it, he never had it surveyed. I'm lined up with the garage that was there and I'm replacing the carport that was there.
Okay.
And there's existing poles still left there that I've just put the carport on. It's not like they aren't there to show that age difference.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion then go to board decision. Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six to nothing. Item 11 is an exception at 225 East Porter.
This was initially on the consent, but after we looked at the site a little closer, we took a different approach. This comprises three originally cladded lots, but it's all under the common ownership. They are actually kept as separate parcels, which is probably something that that needs to be remedied as well, not really for this Board, but the garage does overlap the property line right now, so at least these two should be combined if they want to preserve a lot of record on this and do so by not, they don't, I don't think they'd be obligated to combine those properties. This is the consent I passed around the cards. The main issue staff has is the proximity by which this is going to be pulled up to the front along here, and this is a pretty large area. If you can see, and I'll put my pen, that is the post at the front property line, so if you can imagine that fence coming parallel, it actually isn't proposed until west of, or east of the driveway. But in this area at four and a half feet, a solid tight fence, which is actually just like this fence here. And then there's that post again.
But that one's taller than four and a half feet, isn't it?
Yeah, this is, I believe, six feet up to the.
Right, so it's not like that fence.
So the fact that they're going to bring it out a little bit, it's going to drop to about this height, a little taller than this chain link fence, but it'll be more solid like this along that expanse. Staff believe that for the little amount that they would have to pull it back, about eight feet, they could actually have it six feet as they bring it across from the front of the house, or even with the front of the house, and it'll keep that view shed in the front. If you look at this blue house here, you can see, you know, how much that view shed will be obstructed. Now, they're going to keep it like a little three-foot white picket around the house part right here, so this neighbor really won't have the impact of it. But when you go back to this expanse, I'm not sure if I have anything to the west, this will show you how close that property is to the west. So if you look at this, four and a half foot of this red line here, you know, you have quite a bit of view shed there, it's going to be obstructed, whereas if you just made it even as it would be allowed, they could actually have nearly as large of an area enclosed as they would without the, I mean, without the relief as they are with the relief. So they're really just gaining this area right here with a somewhat larger fence. They could just bring it across here, actually, they could bring it across here, even with the front, and still, I think, achieve what they're trying to achieve and keep that other area still open for the rest. Their house already projects differently than the rest of the street, so.
Eric, have you talked with the applicant about this?
I have not.
Oh, okay.
We had so many cases, I don't know if I would have had time to track down everybody and talk to them individually, but it'd be nice if we could do that.
Well, I know they went from consent to denial, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They might have been caught off guard.
Well, and the other thing is I was, I was gone for the latter part of, once these went out in the mail, so I wasn't able to follow up on that.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do apologize for kind of changing gears on the applicant.
Okay.
Is the applicant here today?
I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, well, hey, I'll call you. Just want to make sure if there's any other questions. Okay, thanks Eric. Now applicant or representative of the applicant?
Hello, my name is
Hello, my name is Monty Lane, and I'm representing Amy Michelle South, owner of the property at 225 East Porter Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa.
And can I get your address too?
Yes, my address is 6150 Blue Bell Lane, Evergreen, Colorado. It's my understanding, the fence on the portion of the property that contains the house would not really be an exemption anyway, as three-foot picket is already allowed within the property lines. The one correction, I guess, that I would have to make is the post on the corner, I believe, was pre-existing, and that sits at only eight feet off the curb, so it's going to be 12 and a half back, which is more of splitting the difference between the pre-existing fence that was there. And that's not going to cause a visibility issue, as that side is not going to be increased above three feet. The neighbor that is on the other side is fine with, I've already spoken with him about the placement of the fence. He's getting kind of a free privacy fence in between the two properties as well. His driveway sits on the other side of the property, there's at least 80 feet in between, and he didn't feel that pulling it back 12 and a half feet would cause any visibility issues. The reason, I guess, that it was stated, I did, I did read the proposal of gaining eight feet. I was told that this would be 12 and a half feet measurement from the curb, whereas moving it back to six foot would be 32 and a half. So it's not a huge deal, it's 20 feet additionally back further to add two more feet, or I guess a foot and a half more than what she wanted. Her feeling was that even though that's only giving up a little bit of a yard, the six-foot tall fence would be less aesthetically pleasing, and kind of a more industrial or walled-off compound-type look than what she was shooting for. So the reason, I guess, that she had applied for the exception was four and a half feet would be less obtrusive, still be nice, and still keep children and pets away from Porter, which is a relatively busy street, while still maintaining the aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Okay. Mel?
Got a question on the layout here. If we've already got a three-foot white picket fence in the front yard by the main part of the house?
Right.
If I was to drive by this place?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it look better just to have the three-foot white picket on the entire frontage, and then run your taller dog-eared picket fence around the three back sides?
Well, fences would be painted and matching on both sides.
Okay.
And it would be staggered and professionally done. I understand what you mean about dropping it back. The reason is she was planning on possibly putting a garden area with a gazebo and a pool there next year.
Okay.
So as per the pool requirements, you're required to have, I'm not sure if it's four or four and a half, it was kind of an effort to kill two birds with one stone, or prevent having an additional fence within a fence within the yard.
That kind of helps a little bit to understand why you're asking for a fence that would be, you know, taller than your existing one on the frontage.
Otherwise, yeah, there would be no reason to. She didn't want to have to add an additional fence to comply with the requirements for the height around the pool in that additional two lots or other areas.
And I guess that adds another wrinkle to this, without knowing what the pool fencing requirements are, where the pool would sit, to see how all this fits together. Right now, we just have an open yard.
Right, that would be applied for later, and I understand that.
Okay.
She was just kind of thinking forward, and that instead of applying for two separate fencing permits and cutting the yard up further.
Okay.
If it's not approved, and I appreciate your consideration and letting me explain this, I'm sure she'd probably just go with the shorter fence closer to the front, because she does not want to cut off that large secondary area of the yard. The goal was to keep it kind of as one intact parcel, without limiting anyone's visibility really in or out, but complying with the requirements for both the pool and correct distance from property line to the curb, and neighbors' driveways not interfering with that triangular area of visibility for either one of the neighbors.
And if we are looking at meeting compliance for a pool, then, and the fence is on the perimeter of the property rather than kind of around the pool itself?
Correct.
Then how do we control the driveway access? Is there a gate there or something?
Uh, no, well, that would be either applied for later, or it would be alongside, I think she's considering eventually adding a wider driveway.
Okay, so again, that's?
It would be chain-linked off, so it would be dog and child proof.
That's a part of the puzzle that I don't see here, then, if we're trying to meet pool requirements, but it doesn't look like this would meet the pool requirements unless you're going to have a gate or something.
One additional piece here.
All the way up to the garage or something?
Yes, as there's a door.
Because that's already there.
Lattice here, and then there's a separate fence, you can always apply for?
Cut across the front there.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
And then just two small pieces, completely complete requirements, or surrounding a pool with an appropriately height, I guess, not climbable fence, which they consider dog-eared picket or chain link, both to be not climbable, is my understanding.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Anybody else here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
How tall does the fence need to be?
Eric?
I don't have an answer for that.
Fence height for pool?
Yeah, I think he's right. There are, they need to have something at least four, four and a half feet to, and that's not as much of a city as it would be if their insurance, you know? We do have a pool ordinance that's kind of separate from the zoning, so that wouldn't be anything that's considered under zoning, but Roger might have something to add to that, too.
Yes?
Well, I was going to tell you the exact amount, but I killed the chair here, my computer chose now to crash. I was in startup repair.
And that is true.
I do know it is at least five foot for a pool under city regulations, because that has come up repeatedly over time.
And that's the minimum, right?
The minimum.
So at four and a half feet, he's not going to meet the requirements, then?
I wouldn't, no.
Okay, all right.
But, but even if he did put a pool there at some point, he could always put a fence around the pool. It doesn't have, I mean, there are, a lot of people do that, they have above-ground pools, and they just build fences around it.
So Anne, do you have something to add?
It's my understanding, Chair, Board, and anonymous zoning enforcement, the fencing requirement's actually in the building code, it's recently been changed. Not sure there is a fence requirement if there's no ladder going into the pool, which will be changed the next time they do the building code revisions, because we see a conflict in that with safety for children.
They just pop right in.
So it's a building code issue.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Close the public portion, then, go to board decision.
You see, that is a lot of fence out front. That's what bothers me.
And it may not solve the problem thereafter. He said he didn't want to have a fenced compound, but kind of that's what we're doing here.
But on the other hand, the neighbors don't object.
This is true.
It is what the client or what the applicant wants.
Okay.
Doesn't seem unreasonable.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't see any reason to deny it. I mean, just for, the idea is that it doesn't meet some standard of aesthetics that other people seem to think is attributable to this area, but that's not what the neighbors think.
I just hate to see us go down that road, where now everybody has tall fences in their front yard.
But what about Robert Frost?
About what?
Poetry.
I haven't been on this board that long. Do you often get these fence requests for a taller front yard fence?
Sometimes.
On occasion, yeah.
Seriously, if we have four, two main streets, like the people in English Home, whatever.
Sure, yeah. Yes.
I, I kind of wonder, depending on what they're really trying to solve here, you know, and Tom's right, to a degree, nobody's complaining, it may not hurt anything, but this may not be what they really want or need if their real intent here is to help fence off a pool area.
I think her real intent is to unify the property she owns and maximize the yard area.
Oh, it'll unify it all right.
And what the city's proposal is, is we cut the yard area that she has legal right to, and cut it back, you know, 20 feet from the curb.
Mm-hmm.
That seems kind of silly. And the applicant has up to two years to take advantage of this. So if, if they have this in their hip pocket, and the pool becomes a real possibility, then they can either modify, or, or take this and put that in, and then adjust the pool fence around that. So gives them a little bit more flexibility, I think.
And if it is approved, I think it'd be important for staff to maybe make them more than aware of, hey, you know, here's the requirements now, or here's what may or may not affect you, depending on when you do build this.
Mm-hmm.
So they can put this into perspective, because if she just thinks she's going to meet this with a four and a half foot fence, if there's no fence closer to the pool than what she proposes, it still won't work.
Right.
So whether or not it looks good, or the neighbors don't care.
Yeah.
So then she's got a different problem, and we can't help her with that one.
That's right. Like, will you talk that through, Mel?
Yeah.
We'll entertain a motion.
Move to grant the exception of one and a half feet over the maximum allowed, three-foot height for fence.
Wait a second. Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye or beware.
Motion carries seven to nothing. Item 14.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll give you the one card. Subject property is a kind of a interesting little area in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's south of Grand. It's near Owl's Head.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in Owl's Head.
Okay.
You have Terrace Road on the south that is unimproved for this little section here along the railroad. These lots were platted many years ago, but then, at a certain point in time, in the, when there's some homes built in the 80s, they were replatted to kind of align differently. So they lost their lot of record status. Now, the interesting thing is, I don't see, I can't find where some of these lots were created without some kind of board relief, but they were. I'm not, I need, I would really have to dig, I think, to figure out where that occurred. So you see like this little tiny lot up here, and this piece, and then the, kind of a weird dogleg piece here. These, these lots used to be more kind of perpendicular lot lines, or parallel lot lines, I'm sorry, towards Zwart. So really, they actually were platted in a manner that probably made them a little bit more conducive for development. A couple homes were built, but then this is a remaining piece with kind of a steep slope that drops from about 30 feet from here to here. It's heavily wooded. There are examples, in fact, just across the street to the northwest, the house that's of a flat roof design, that's fairly significant in fact. There's other examples throughout the neighborhood, not very far away, of more of a flat roof, architecturally designed approach. If you're looking at this property from Zwart, this is looking south over the river valley, you can see how thick it is. This is the home that would be just to the west of the subject property. This is looking to the east. Zwart kind of starts to go uphill and turn toward the north. This is the home, it's kind of a dome-shaped roof, just to the east of the subject property, and I believe they're the ones that submitted the card that went through. But you can see, again, how quickly that drops off from Zwart. And then if you want to get the perspective from Terrace Road, looking up at Zwart, again, this is that, kind of that dome-shaped roof, and then this is the main property where the house would be built at some point. There's the ability to access from both, depending on how you want to do the garage, or if you want to do it as a tuck-under, or whatever. But definitely, I think, any home that would be built would have to take advantage of the terrain to, to work. This is a rendering that they're submitting with the appeal that shows this flat roof kind of concept. I don't know if that's the exact home that they'll build, but they're definitely wanting that flat roof design, and they want to get the relief to be able to do it. This is a bird's eye view of what that would take. And again, I think to take advantage of a reasonable slope to the front of the house, they want to come closer to Zwart than the average setback would allow, which is just a slight reduction, 10 feet less than the 30-foot calculated average. So they're, they would project out, and part of that's based on, if you look at that line, it kind of cuts through the front of that posed house. And then they would want to go down as low as five feet. Now, the example they're showing here on the drawing, I believe, is showing 10 foot. So they obviously want the flexibility to have maybe a slightly larger house than the footprint that they demonstrated. When staff looked at this, we definitely felt it met the criteria for the flat roof design, which, to waive the single-family design guidelines, you have to demonstrate that it's comparable to other character of homes in the area. So again, we saw enough examples in this area of architecturally designed homes with flatter roof pitches, if not completely flat. Second, the, the other relief really has to be in accordance with the typical exception relief. Oh, the other thing on the, the, the single-family design guidelines is the unique views and vegetation. Certainly, there's unique topography and vegetation in this area to work around as well, so that's in place. But then the other thing is, what's reasonable? I don't think there's any ability for them to gain area, to meet the minimum area, without being at the expense of another property, yet it's a parcel that sits there and it's technically not developable at this point. So I think there's practical difficulty in getting to the area that we need. Because of the challenges of development, I think the other thing is that something of a certain value is probably going to have to be placed on this property to make it, to make it work, and that might include a bigger footprint. And so I think it's also probably going to meet the test for practical difficulty on, on reducing the side yard setbacks. And the front yard is definitely, again, due to the practical nature of the terrain. I think if they pushed that house back another 10 feet, there's a significant cost in extending that entrance off the grade of the street at a reasonable grade under our current standards. I think there's probably historic examples where people had driveways you don't like to pull up into, but we don't want to create that with a new house. So we're recommending in favor, we do want to ensure that the building codes are met. We do want to review that final design to ensure that it is compatible with the surrounding area. And then, there's nothing about this that would necessarily trigger tree removal, there's not a plat instrument or something that would trigger our code requirements, but we do want to have a look at the, and have them mitigate any significant trees that are removed under the way we would look at it in a normal situation, like a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's fair, because if we didn't have that, the tendency would be to clear the entire site of trees, possibly. I know that they want to preserve as many of the nice ones for the value of the, of the property, but there's probably some advantage to keeping canopy as well. So there's a couple methods that they can use to figure out the tree mitigation formula. They can either do a canopy method, or they can... They can either do a canopy method, or they can identify any of the trees that are larger than 12 inches in diameter that will be removed. And they can mitigate those by planting elsewhere on the property. Yes?
At the time of the plating, what were our requirements in place for a 10,000 square foot minimum lot area and an 80-foot?
I believe that there were, that they wouldn't have been any different in the early eighties, I don't think, than they are currently.
So from the time this lot was platted, it was an unbuildable lot?
I, I, I would say yes, yes. And I was trying to figure out how a couple of the other houses were built, and I've never found that.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, on each side of this unbuildable lot, are these cheap houses?
No.
I think the owners would say no.
Well, they're worth 350 or 400,000 dollars.
Yeah, they're a little newer and they're, they're not necessarily the same design pattern that you would see further up the street where it was more, where the development was older, but.
Well, no, but I mean, seriously, aren't these houses, you know, have some serious assessed value?
Yeah, yeah.
And you're, you're trying to squeeze another house in between them? Don't you think that would contribute to the detriment of the neighborhood, rather than any, add any value to the neighborhood?
No, I don't think it would. I think that the pattern of, if you look at the lot pattern there, it'd be different if they were run larger lots than what this is proposing. And they were larger foot, you know, these are maybe, if they were twice the footprint or something, I would probably agree with you. But in this case, I think unless they're, you know, wanting to preserve that by buying half of them to go with each side, you know? I mean, it's actually kind of a hole in the block in terms of the pattern of development that you see there. I gotta probably show you on the area to get a sense of that. So I mean, if you look up this street, you, you know, you still have this kind of fairly compact arrangement of homes. Yes, they're of significant value. I would say that these up here are probably in higher value than these down here. Without checking, I couldn't say for sure. They're, I think that these are probably more, there's more two-story and two-and-a-half stories up in this area. You know, if you were trying to put some tiny little thing on this one, I would think there would, that would probably be something I would say I could agree with. But, but this is probably even a bigger lot in area, if not close, to the one just to the east of it. And to the west of it.
Well, as I recall, when the city owns something like this that looks somewhat unbuildable, we call it a wild bird harborage or some such thing.
Oh, a bird sanctuary?
Yeah, bird sanctuary.
Could be a bird sanctuary right now, yeah.
Could be.
I call them infill lots.
Infill lots.
Eric, do, do you know, we've got the area of the lot, we've got the, you know, exceptions requested on side yard, but about how many square foot would the footprint of the house be, the structure itself? Are we talking like just, you know, 1,500 square foot house for a footprint, or?
Probably even bigger than that.
And I might need to ask the applicant this, but I see there's kind of an L shape. I didn't know if that's a deck or an L extension for?
Yeah, that's a good question, if they were.
For living space or, or what we've got here? You know, if we want to cram a 3,000 square foot footprint on a lot, that's different.
You could really bring the footprint back, you know, kind of in that walkout manner, to get fairly substantially, I mean, the back setback is, you know, probably to this area, right?
Right, right.
So if you sort of squared that area off, you'd get a fairly significant, I would think it's larger than 1,500.
Okay. And again, I could ask the applicant if they got an idea. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Phil, Matt here. Do you mind, since we're all approved, that within there are just exceptions, can we hear what the complaints are or whatever first before we address?
Well, you, you also get to have a rebuttal too, so, yeah. So if you wanted to, I mean, you don't have to say anything, just give me your name and address. And if that's all, if we don't have any questions, Jay can sit and sit.
Hello, Matt Connolly, Generation Green Builders and Iowa Realty here, representing a prospective buyer for this lot and build-to-order project. Thanks for, nice to see some of you guys funding that. I didn't know you guys were on this board, but fun to see and fun to meet you otherwise. The, this is just an infill lot build, you know? Trying to keep people interested in building in city of Des Moines limits and, you know, raising families and, you know, promoting, promoting infill lot building. And I don't, I'm, I'm very much not aware of any objections to a possible house on this lot. So I welcome anything and will address anything, any concerns anybody has.
Matt, I'd like to have you, we'll ask some questions, but Jay, can you get that card that objects to it? Yeah, this, this one's pretty objectionable.
And while they're passing, Matt, Matt, can, can you tell us how long? Is it a big porch area? You can't really tell by looking at the.
Right. If you caught some of my questions earlier, you know, what's the footprint in square footage? Not, you know, not how many stories in square footage, but the footprint in square footage. And there's kind of that L shape off the back. Is that living area, or is that a deck, or a raised porch? What do we got there? And if you could put that picture back up there, or help him do that, so he can point to it, that might be helpful.
Matt, repeat, go ahead. Read, go ahead and read it first, if you want to.
Excuse me?
You want to read that card first, and then?
Uh, yeah. Zane is the architect here, can he come up here with this, please?
Sure.
And, you know, I'm comfortable addressing what house is gonna go there as far as that goes. But really, we have not closed on this lot and we have not confirmed building plans or permits. We're not there as far as that goes. So square footage is very much up in the air, you know? Lot, or house design is very much up in the air. You know, we, we're gonna build a decent-sized house there. I mean, you know, our budget's between 300 and 400,000 dollars, if you want, if you're aware, if you're interested in that.
Always helps.
You know? So as far as square footage-wise, you know, we'll see. It's all about how lot development's gonna go and how much of our project budget is gonna take that.
So Matt, these exceptions that you're asking for now, mostly a guideline? Or are you gonna plan to use all of those exceptions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, yeah.
Zane Munz, I'm with Design Crew, so the architecture firm, and also with Iowa Realty. So I guess I can have the architecture background as well. And the address is 7811 Maryland Drive, and that's in Windsor Heights.
Okay.
So I guess I'll talk a little bit towards the square footage, as I've been working with the, the client on that. Again, not aware of these either. But in regards to the exception, the question that you just asked, Bill?
Yeah.
The reason we asked for some of these things is we wanted to get, gain some of that flexibility. I think staff did a good job of, you know, sort of interpreting what we were sort of asking for. I think if you look back at the image, and I'm gonna ask you to kind of slide that back real quick, Matt. If you, and I'm gonna go ahead and point, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, that helps a lot.
We'd like that.
So I think one of the things that we were trying to do with this initial sort of concept was pull the, this house further closer to, to Zwart Road. And the reason is, the huge value to the client, as well as I would guess the homeowners next door, is the lot, the views and everything else, as you're looking over, you know, into the wooded countryside in order to what I believe is Waterworks Park area. So we were trying to kind of pull ourselves back away from sort of, you know, our views out from their house as well. So that, along with, and again, I meant to bring up the, the points for consideration for the board, but the other one they sort of made was sort of the idea of congestion along Zwart Avenue, or along any of the streets. So we were trying to also get closer so that we could actually create a driveway off of here. So that way, you, if you drive along Zwart Avenue now, most of the houses up further along don't have garages. So a lot of the cars are in the street parking. We're trying to avoid that by giving a, not only a garage, but also create a driveway. So people who come visit have a chance to pull off. The adjacent two properties, these, neither one of those have the sort of Zwart Road access. They access a driveway and stuff from down below. So we were trying to avoid sort of the views looking out over driveway. I mean, so again, we were just trying to be accommodating some of those things and be good stewards towards, towards those. The house that we currently have designed is 1,400 square feet on the main level, including a 400 square foot garage. So it's roughly a 22 by 22-foot garage to fit two cars within there. And then it has a walkout lower level. So that's, and I can address more of those questions, Zane.
Zane, if, if those general dimensions, 1,400 square feet, 400 square foot garage, the way you've kind of sketched this out here with your nice kind of, you know, rough site plan, you've, you've got some dimensions for your side yard, which I can't read. But how, how wide is this proposed side yard based on kind of your footprint that you've got now there? Yeah, what are those dimensions there?
So when you talk here?
Yes.
Initially, we put this in, because I wanted the client to, what we designed even initially to fit within whatever, in case we weren't able to.
Because that's kind of where I'm at, yeah.
That's what we wanted to start with.
Okay.
Again, it, it improves the ability, what we can design and how much we can sort of continue to tuck that, if we're able to nudge a little more into those areas. Also, it takes advantage of us having to go down the hill less, which is a bigger advantage towards the budget and, again, maintaining certain views. I think the major thing, and again, going back to the tree mitigation part that we discussed, is the reason the garage and everything is on this side is there's a grouping of trees here. And when we did the site survey, we actually asked them to come through and locate all of the trees.
Okay.
So we sort of have that as our baseline for what we're trying to do. Per this design, we were looking at losing what I'm anticipating to be just one tree based on the site layout.
Okay.
One of the, one of the larger trees that's been cited per our site plan. Obviously, there's a lot of saplings and things of that nature that are sort of within there. But the other thing I would caution in any of those things with keeping trees is when you start to come in and build a house with foundations and everything else, you run the risk of getting into root systems.
Yes.
So we are also aware of that. I mean, that's obviously something as an architect we're constantly dealing with on these types of projects, so.
Can I mention something? So this is a very, as Eric pointed out, and as you guys may or may not be aware, it's a very difficult lot development, home site, very difficult. And so that's why it's been sitting there, and that's why it hasn't been built on. So we are gonna do everything we can to make sure it's safe, make sure it's, you know, healthy for everyone around, and especially the buyer as far as that goes. But we're gonna do, as a green builder that I am, do everything we can to preserve the condition of the site to its, you know, original as-is status, very much including the trees that are there. But keep in mind, I didn't know that, that tree ordinance or the tree mitigation rule was gonna be in place. So if Eric could, I'm not familiar with what needs to come down and what needs to be replaced. So if we can address that before this is all over, that, that'd be real great. Just because last I left the city building department was that we, we, they were gonna disregard any tree. So I think, I, tree mitigation issues, meaning that for lot design or lot development on a bigger project, it, for a developer, it matters as far as what you're gonna do with the trees on a simple lot like this. I think Knutson over there was, is the zoning guy and said that there'll be nothing here. And then obviously, they've had to change it too, is that right, Eric? The, the tree mitigation that you're asking us for us to?
That's not a requirement, but we're asking it to be a condition of the relief. So that you take care of how you design this to avoid seeing that with the trees.
It'd be a little bit of a quid pro quo. You're asking for something, so maybe the, you know, then you give something back with some other considerations.
Meaning that if we take down trees, you want us to plant some, is that what you're saying? I, I, I can't go along with that, because there's so many trees on the lot as-is, and we're only gonna get rid of trees that need to be gone. So, you know, it's, it's not behoof of anybody, neighbors or homeowner. Bill, it's, it's of no consequence to add trees to the lot. I'm sorry that I would be very much opposed to that recommendation from staff, as I feel like that was never an issue before. And now, maybe because of the reluctance of the neighbors, that that has come upon. But I can't go along with any reasonable understanding or anybody, there's no reason for adding more trees. There's a lot of trees on the lot. And to be honest, we're gonna take advantage the best of some solar orientation, because we got a tree right on the southwest corner of the lot that's gonna give some great, you know, sunlight in the winter and which everybody that has trees on, on the southwest corner of their property gets to take advantage of. And, you know, we're gonna get the shade in the summertime as well. So we're very much gonna be keeping the trees necessary. But adding trees is, is a cost we don't want to take on. No, we don't want to screw up the site. We're gonna try to use it the best we can with natural vegetation and whatnot, you know? Or let's just put it this way, the least amount of water needed as far as that goes.
I think we'll probably listen to, I don't know, if Sue Ann has the information on the tree mitigation. Do you want, if you got the, do you have info on that? I don't think the idea here is to, is to plant all new trees. I think it's, you know, whatever you clear out, you're gonna have to have building on. But if you have to tear out something, I'll let Sue.
Chair members of the board, under the plans for this lot, tree mitigation would not kick in as a requirement of the ordinance, because of the size of the lot.
Okay.
What Eric's saying is, like Mel said, it would be a trade-off. It's a staff recommendation for approval, but it's not a requirement under the ordinance.
Okay. And help me out then. In the, because, you know, taking a look at that picture, you, there's gonna be, have to be some clear cut that has to be going through there, just to build. And I'm assuming they're trying to keep as many trees as they can without doing any damage to them. Where, where would the mitigation come in? What, in your view, if they were clearing that out? And if you could put us, picture the, the lot up there again. Matt, I would say it's a lot of trees that might have to be cleared out. But what, what would be a tree replacement plan that, that staff would have in mind?
I don't know how it would be calculated. The planning staff does that. They would look at the tree canopy, figure out how many trees were on the lot before construction started, and then try to get mitigation. If, if they clear cut it down to the ground and didn't save any trees, they would want a certain number put back in in order to get a canopy back within a certain number of years. So it would depend when they came in with their plan and said, we're gonna cut down, you know, X number of trees. Does that deforest and maybe, under this agreement, you get some back in? So it would be based on the work they do, the grading they do, and how many they take out.
Okay.
And, and to qualify for need to mitigate trees, yes, we've got a lot of saplings out here and undergrowth. But when you look at tree mitigation, do you have a minimum caliper size of a tree that constitutes? That's, that's a savable tree that you'd normally need to mitigate?
I think it's one and a half inches to replace in. But I think they look at the total canopy and how many trees would be under.
Because there's a lot of inch and a half trees out.
Unless you go out and do a count by count.
Yeah.
They don't do it that way.
Okay.
Not only the size, it's the type of tree.
As well.
It's the type of tree also.
Scrubs, yes, yes. Okay, that's helpful.
And, and as I understand, this is just a recommendation from staff, not a requirement?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
I've got a boundary survey here, I'll show you.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Yeah, just gotta think.
And this has the trees marked on them, basically. And we're gonna work around, we're just trying to get a footprint, you know, to deal with. So we're at very preliminary here. We're trying to get a footprint with allowing some room, wiggle room on the setbacks as far as, you know, what is, we happen to have a soil report actually back yet as far as what we're gonna end up having to do. We might end up having to do a big old retaining wall as part of the front foundation wall or something, you know, that, you know, might have to go further across than we'd like it, or it might come out shorter. It's just gonna depend on structural engineering and soil engineering on what, what we have to work with. So we're not solid gold on whatever we're doing quite yet until some more money's spent on lot development cost analysis, basically. So these are the trees.
And I'm assuming you came up with significant sized trees? You had some kind of?
Yeah.
Some kind of cut line, pun intended, for?
Typical for site surveyors, in terms of what they look at.
Sure.
I will just sort of point out on here that the goal was to maintain this area, I'm sorry.
In the front.
As the drive.
Yep.
And then have the house slope. When I say slope, I just mean angle towards this way to keep that grouping of trees. So really, what we're trying to do is build within that footprint. That gives us, you know.
Gotcha.
Last, we have to go down the hill, then we try, we're trying not to affect these kinds of trees in here. I guess that was kind of my point I was trying to make earlier with the survey.
Do you have your own incentive to try to keep the lot as wooded as possible while fitting in a structure?
Well, yeah. I mean, we're going to have a certified green project here through the National Association of Home Builders. And every little bit of lot preservation or land preservation that we can do is all part of our points that we're going after.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Now, that's from.
His perspective, right?
From clients' perspective, that was their goal. That's why they love this location, love this lot. So I think, you know, there's the green perspective, but there's also the clients' the reality that.
A nice view. Right, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicants? Thanks, guys. Is there anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Let me ask, is there more than one or just?
There'll be more than one.
Is everybody planning on speaking?
I think a total of three.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind getting, line up against the wall and be ready to go. You don't have to go right in, I mean.
Good afternoon. Todd Lance. I'm an attorney at the Bellin Firm with the Financial Center, 666 Walnut Street in Suite 2000 in Des Moines. Here as a representative for the neighbors of this lot. First, David and Linda Hopper, who live at 128 Zwart Road. That is the parcel directly to the east. Also, Joe and Julie Yankee. They reside at 115 Zwart Road, which is the parcel directly to the west. I'll refer to them collectively as the neighbors, if that's all right. And as you know, they are here, so they may correct things. If there's anything I say that's incorrect, emphasize things they think deserve emphasis or add details in places where I can't. The applicant here seeks seven different exceptions to the zoning laws here, and we only object to a couple of those as the, as the neighbors. Just some of those. And those primarily are the exceptions relating to the side setbacks on these lots that they've, they've requested to have as little as five feet on each side and less than 10 feet in total in the side setbacks. And also the exception relating to the setback from Zwart Road. To be clear, the neighbors don't oppose the exceptions requested that relate to the pitch of the roof or that relate to the lot width. The bottom line here is the neighbors don't want an oversized house to, to be built on this property. That would needlessly and severely block their views and result in overcrowding that is exactly the problem they tried to avoid in purchasing these lots initially. Neither the applicant, who is the current owner of the property, or the prospective buyer here, would face any hardship from having a home built here that is appropriately sized to the size of this lot. There's nothing unique about the terrain or topography of this lot that requires a home to be built less than 10 feet from the road. In fact, numerous homes, including the Hoppers, have, numerous homes in this area have to have reinforcement underneath because of the slope of this home. And their homes are worth less, assessed at less than the total budget that's anticipated for this home. You can move down, move further down the hill. It may be slightly more expensive to anchor to bedrock, but that's something that everyone in this neighborhood faces. And that's something that, that's a reality. There is a slope on this property, you see, but that goes from the road back to Terrace Drive. There's nothing, nothing about the slope of this road that justifies a side, a side expansion of a home to the east and west lots up to those property lines. That drastic reduction in the side yard setbacks would only harm the view of both the Hoppers and the Yankees, and in fact, would likely diminish the property value because one of the aspects of living in this neighborhood is the view. And these homes are significant. We asked what these homes are worth, both of them, and they estimated between $250,000 and $300,000 assessed value. And they're significantly more than up the road where there's about $100,000 less assessed value. The criteria here, again, in terms of setback from the road, one of the criteria you have to consider is whether there are a feasible alternative to this setback. And clearly, there is based on what other homes in this, in this neighborhood and how they've been built and how they've been designed. The exceptions requested by this applicant are also inconsistent with the character of this neighborhood and the design of existing dwellings in this neighborhood. Many of the lots are similarly sized in this neighborhood, including the Hoppers and the Yankees, and their homes are not built to the edge of their lot lines. They do this to allow for everyone to enjoy the scenery, enjoy the views, the wooded nature all around. There's no other homes with these sort of setbacks that have been identified. This would be an outlier on the street and an oversized one. In some, the exceptions requested by, it's actually Mr. Martinez, who's the applicant here, but, or the prospective buyer, relating particularly to the side yard setbacks and the setback in the street are unreasonable, unnecessary, and would unduly prejudice the ability of the Hoppers and the Yankees to enjoy their property and would diminish the, the property value. We urge the board to reject these applications for that reason. With that, I'll also emphasize, they can speak more on the issue of trees and how important that tree cover issue is, and I'll turn it to the homeowners themselves also with that framework in mind and those, those issues identified.
Hold on.
Mr. Lance, before you abandon us here.
Sure.
If you look at the appeals that, that are made here, the first one is the exception of the 3 to 12 roof pitch.
Yes.
You don't have any objection to that?
No.
And the next one is the exception to 1,845 square feet, less than 10,000 square foot lot. You don't have any objection to that?
Well, well, we'd, we'd like to keep this lot vacant. I think the, the neighbors would. It is, we understand their lots are about the same size.
No, I'm asking you what you have an objection to.
We, we do not have an objection to.
All right. And then the exception of 13 feet less than the minimum required 80-foot of lot width.
No objection.
No objection. So those first three, you don't have any objection to?
That's correct. We'll try to make your job easier.
The other four?
The other four, we do object to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Yeah, you can tag team, that's fine.
Moral support.
I need her support. I'm David Hopper. This is my sweetie of 53 years, Linda. We live at 128 Terrace Road. Our house is adjoining this lot to the east. We built it when we were in our mid-40s, and that was 30 years ago. The exceptions that they want on the lot lines, five feet instead of 10, close to us. We, we built this house knowing that we were going to live and die in it. It was our dream house. We were counting on these dimensions remaining as they are. And now this fellow's coming along and he wants to destroy those dimensions that were set for a certain reason, a good reason, we thought, and something we've been counting on all this time. And that's why we, we feel that it's very important that you not accept the side variances. That's what we want. Thank you for listening to us.
Okay.
And can I just say?
You sure can.
The view from our house is out the west, and the view from Yankee's house is out the east. And after looking at their footprint on there, they're going to, they're just, we're not going to have any view. We're going to have a view of a house if you okay at five feet from our lot line. And that's just unacceptable. It's just, you know.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Yankee. We're at 115 Zwart. This is my wife, Julie. I, I would say, I, you know, thank you for letting us speak and, you know, I, we pay our taxes, and I look to you guys to protect these zoning regulations, and that's what I hope you guys can do. Thanks.
I'd just like to add, same thing, removing the emotion from this actual situation. Purchasing a home is a big deal. And although the Hoppers have many years on us, this was the purchase of our first home, and we spent a lot of time looking around the city of Des Moines. We understand when you live in the city limits of Des Moines, you're going to have neighbors. We, we're aware of that. But when you purchase a home, you also are aware of how close someone can actually be to you. And so we made this investment. The major reason is the view. These pictures don't do it justice, but there are a lot of trees, and there are a wonderful view. Having a building that much closer to us would, would hinder it. And that was a big reason why we selected this area. Some people may wonder, five feet, big deal, what's the, what's the big deal? But when you already live on a small lot and you're building a house on a small lot, statistically, numbers-wise, it is a big deal, and it is a big deal for us. So thank you for allowing us to share our concerns.
Thank you. Matt and Zane, you got three minutes for rebuttal and closing comments?
I can say this, thanks for allowing us the opportunity to listen to your concerns for sure. And I can comfort them and say this to everybody, we're not set on what footprint's going to be there, you know, as far as that goes. We're going to do it however the lot allows us to do it. We're not doing it one way or the other, you know, because of anything in particular other than what's allowed by the, from the land to us, you know, as far as that goes and what's going to be required because of the engineering. So if we can, you know, squeeze, I'm not sure how it's going to shake out. We might have to go back beyond that hill anyway, you know, as far as that goes. And then, and then we would maybe be back up here for a rear yard setback, you know, deal. But, but for right now, we're only asking for a little leniency here because, has City Des Moines always been 10, both sides? I figured, I thought it was.
For the 80-foot, the R.
Oh, right, okay. I'm used to five, I think, 10. So the, I can just say that we'll, we'll adjust however necessary when allowed the right information from our research as far as that goes. And I don't think, it's actually my cousin Tony that, well, I'll be building this house for, and Zane, are set on anything. We're spending a little bit of money here and there, but really, we need some more research before we can actually come together on a footprint. We'll take care of the trees and stuff, and we're not going to, we're going to do our best to respect the neighbors. We all, my cousin wants to raise a family there and everything too. So I mean, it's, it's not something that we're going to, you know, upset anybody on purpose by any means.
Matt, could, could I just ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
A question? Would you put the picture of the footprint of the house back up? And so what the neighbors are saying, the way I understand it, is that they just feel like it's a little too close. So if you shaved some square footage off the side and brought it out toward the back. But in my mind, I'm thinking, wouldn't it impede their view more if the house were deeper rather than wider? I mean, to me, when I look at this, I think their view would be less obscured than if you made the house narrower but deeper.
Right. I, I will say, they, I mean, obviously, they have a point. Right now, when they look to the west and to the east, they look upon an empty lot. So that would be considered a view. But if you were to take a house and put it in there, you know, you obviously are losing that quote-unquote view. So to your point, that was why we sort of asked for the exception, because we were trying not to force the house further down the hill to maintain the bigger view, which, and the exposure to the south. I mean, again, in terms of planning, residential home planning, obviously, in the suburbs and everywhere else, we forgot a lot of these concepts about, you know, maximizing solar orientation and, and things for homes. But that's what we're trying to do, is expand more of an east-west orientation for this house so it can, you know, maintain, get the solar orientation for the wintertime so that they don't have the heating and cooling costs. I mean, we're trying to be good stewards with that. So I think that's why we were asking for the exceptions. Obviously, you pointed out, and we've noticed, we're designing within what we consider to be the city's sort of 10-foot. We're just saying, if we can extend it and we have that flexibility, you know, are we asking to go all the way five to five? I don't think that we are. I think we just want to be able to have some, if we need to shave it, slide it one way to the left or one way to the right based upon soil and other situations that come up within the foundation. I think we want that flexibility to be able to do that. But I think, to your point, that is what we were trying to do by asking for the exceptions, give us that flexibility to maintain more room to this, to the south by pulling the house closer to, to Zwart Road. And the same with the setback to the front of Zwart Road, again, trying to pull it closer to that side.
Yeah. To your point, Linda, I think you're right. Logically, it seems like we're giving them less restricted views, pulling the house up and expanding it out rather than pushing it back further. Yes.
I mean, and this might be a question for Eric. I mean, somebody could come along and build a house here and not ask for any exceptions and be able to do it, correct?
No, I think they still need the area and the width probably because the lot doesn't conform in whatever, I don't know if that was.
Or square footage.
At the time, but.
It's going to be 10,000.
It's an unbuildable lot right now.
Even if it had relief at some point in time, it lost it because it was never built. So they, they would need the relief of the lot area and the lot width to make a single family.
Because it's R180.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the rear yard setback on this R180 now?
It's actually another front yard average.
When it was planted.
From the Terrace Road.
So it was planted.
So give me an estimate.
I'd have to look in the file to see what we calculated there. We didn't get into that.
It could be that it was supposed to be.
Because I'm just curious, depending on what boundaries we give if we hold on the side yards, how far might they push it to the back without needing other relief from us? And I think you brought that up yourself.
It's at least 30, it could be as much as 50.
Okay.
I don't think it's.
That would be adding more square footage that we're not doing.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I'm just, you're, you're kind of conceptual here, and that makes me a little more nervous then. If this was your final dimensions and we could write that into our decision. It's 33 feet. Okay. And since we're not having rear yard stuff on the table, they'd have to stay 33 feet back from that quote, "south property line."
Well, Eric, I have a couple of questions, if it'll be all right. One, you guys haven't talked to the neighbors yet. I mean, this.
No, yeah, we've, we've already.
Okay, all right. And the second thing, what, is there a timeframe that's driving this? Or I guess what, you know, Brooke had mentioned, and I was thinking myself, I, I would almost like to maybe get a month or two conveyance on this so that we could, so you can talk more. And then you might be able to do some more studies. It doesn't look like it's going to snow anytime soon, knock on wood. But it, I would, I think, and, because, look, here's what I like. They're not objecting to your, your first three exceptions. I thought that was going to be an issue. Mainly, it's the side yard setback. I think, in my view, that if, if we can address that issue to their satisfaction, and it may be, maybe say, I only need a three-foot except for something, and it's something that they can agree to, I think we're going to be a lot smoother sailing here. So are you under a timeline crunch, or can we?
That's hard.
We good with you?
Yeah.
I, I mean, my thought is, we're, we're talking about doing this and, and changing this, and, and I hate to pin you in a corner and want to give them the, the benefit of a doubt. And if you guys can come together and say, hey, look, I can live with this, and this will work, and that's going, and, and your studies show that this is going to make it viable so that you make some money on the deal, I think we're all in the same boat here. We, we're going to end up with a, a double win here, so.
Yeah. It's a great opportunity. We don't want to pass up. We will definitely, we can propose a couple more documents when we, when we receive them and.
So if.
We will definitely, we can propose a couple more documents when we receive them and meet with the neighbors or meet back here.
If we were to continue this, would one month or two months sound good to you?
I would think one month would be.
One month, so.
Yeah.
Now, it's kind of a short month. It's December 19th.
Three weeks.
Yeah, three weeks. They're going to give you enough time?
Well, my only caveat, though, from a design perspective, if we continue to pull out the design schedule, just from a client's perspective, it's going to be a challenge for him to keep paying things as we go along. So, I would say.
Three weeks, okay.
And we're actually further along than this. You know, this was what we submitted for conceptual. So, we are schematically further along for what we have. And just to sort of note a couple of things, this right here, this garage, that was roughly 22, 24 feet from the conceptual. And if you look, that's bigger than that, right? That's like another, maybe 35, I don't want to call it 40 feet yet. So, total dimension here, we were sort of throwing out, you know, maybe 50, 55 feet. Well, our current design has this ominous western perimeter being only 45, 40 to 45 feet within that dimension. So, we're even trying, again, being good stewards, we're trying to pull back further from that and maintain more, because the less we can get down the site, the less we're having to get machinery and things and disturb this sort of, the natural-esque moment of this.
I think you got a good start. I think they've got some good points. I don't think they'll, I think they're willing to work with you. Would that, I mean, if we gave a month, come back December 19th, would that be something agreeable with you people?
I think that would be part of it. It seems what is holding us up is the uncertainty over where they feel they can build side to side. Now, if they can get the soil where it's done to know where they can build, where those lines need to be in three weeks and get back to us, that works, but I'm.
I understand that they're urgent, but if we can, I'd like to see if we can get something that where everybody can come together and everybody's happy, everybody wins, that's what we're here for, so.
We, we have, like, I have just a three-week timeframe on their end. I'd like to.
Yeah.
Have them come to us and just a concept.
Yeah, and maybe share some coffee with them, explain the plans.
Sure, we're, we've got the soil testing underway, so three weeks should barely just be enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you don't have anything more, I think we're going to, yes, Jake?
Mr. Chair, before you close out, I just want to go on record as recusing myself. I had this particular property under contract with this particular seller and so I don't want to participate.
Very good, Jake, thank you.
Probably good reason.
Okay.
It was 10 years ago, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you recuse yourself too? No, no. Between now and the 19th of December, I'd like City Legal or the applicant to indicate to us why this particular configuration is now in existence. It looks to me like this was carved out of the adjoining two lots, that the, these adjoining two lots used to be 110 feet apiece. And now, they're 80 feet and we've got a 60-foot lot, or whatever it is now. The, and if that in fact is the case, where we are taking an originally planted area that we're platted for 80-foot and, and the plat was, was put out there as complying with all the city regs, and now, due to the cleverness of people, you've cut down the size of the lots you've sold off and built on in order to squeeze in another one, I don't see why we should grant any relief. So, I'd like that answered between now and the 19th.
Yes?
Members of the board, we can try to do that. That exercise would be tremendously assisted if we could have, if we could borrow the abstract for this property for a day or two.
Sure.
All that information will probably be disclosed in that. I was just looking at the same question. I don't imagine that the slot was here in 1965.
No, the, not as configured. Neither, and as you go east, they weren't either.
Okay. If we can see the abstract, we may be able to answer that question.
That Hogan Law Office right now.
Okay.
If you guys don't have anything more to add, I think we'll take it back over here, if that's okay?
With the consent of the applicant, I move that we continue this matter to the next regularly scheduled meeting on December 19th.
And I'll second that. I think it's a good plan.
Same time of day?
Same time of day, sometime after 1:00.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah, this seems to be working pretty good, so go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, and this is for you guys too, there's a reason why this lot has been, not been built on for 30 years. It's because it's unstable soil and we know because we live next door to it and we watched our house start to go down the hill. And we had to have anchored walls come out and they put in 13 piers on the west side of the house and raised the house a little bit. Otherwise, we, you know, we'd be heading down the street.
Well, I think they're going to find out. If the soil samples are bad, then there's no benefit even trying to build. So, I agree with you, yeah.
Okay, well, it is our hope, you guys, that your soil samples go very deep because there's a, there's a grease plane down there, a shear plane, where the red clay meets gray clay. And what's all above the red clay slides against the gray clay. But you have to go down there really deep to find it. We didn't know that.
And we put in, we had our soil tested and the firm that did it, the architectural firm that did it, said that we needed to put in, you know, double the size of the footings for the house, which we did. It cost us an extra $10,000 back in 19, you know, 30 years ago. And, and our house still moved.
Well, we appreciate your insight and hopefully, let's find a solution.
Oh, really deep.
Don't forget that coffee. These guys go a lot of way to help you out. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue this to the December 19th meeting. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining, motion carries six to 0 to 1. Got that, Bert? Thank you all, your input was very helpful, we appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One item of note, I'll need to leave by about 5:30 tonight.
Well, you might be chased out by the historical boards.
We're being evicted anyways.
Are we really going to get evicted? That's good.
Thanks, everybody. Item 15 is a variance of 2715 East University and 909 and 913 East 27th.
This item is for the P&amp;P Small Engines business on East University Avenue. They have, for the past several years, they've had an outdoor storage yard south of the building. It's owned C1, so outdoor storage technically isn't a permitted use, so they're, so they're asking for a variance to allow that outdoor storage. And then, they're also asking for a variance of the 10-foot required setback from the south property line and from the east property line. I would point out that since this is C1, which doesn't allow for outdoor storage, there aren't any zoning regulations that regulate outdoor storage, so there aren't any requirements that the area be paved. We're recommending that it be paved as one of our conditions of approval, but technically, there aren't any zoning regulations to fall back on. And I can tell you, the applicant would prefer to not have to pave it. Here's a closer view of the outdoor storage yard. Again, we're looking at this area here. This is the business that fronts East University Avenue to the north. The outdoor storage is in this area, again, they're asking for a variance of 10 feet less than the required setback from the east and south property lines. This portion of the site here was recently rezoned by City Council to C1, which allowed them to proceed with this request to the board.
Before you move that, can you tell us which parts are paved?
The pavement stops right about here, I believe.
It's just.
Up there. And this is gravel, yeah, grass and gravel. This is a photo looking, oops, back towards, this just shows the pavement. And hopefully, in your monitors, it shows it better on the big screen. But there's a solid six-foot fence that surrounds the storage area. And in this photo, you can see the gate is open. There's another photo of the building. And again, looking to the east, yeah, to the east. The comic cards, we had all the cards but one in support. We have recommended approval. We understand their need for some outdoor storage and constructing a building addition probably isn't feasible for what they're needing. So, we've recommended approval, subject to some conditions. One, they comply with the site plan. Two, all storage shall occur on a durable and dustless surface. Three, any storage shall be setback 10 feet from the property line. Four, the storage shall be screened by six-foot tall screen. Five, the equipment in the area shall not be left running for the sake of keeping the peace in the residential area. Six, the feds shall be in accordance with the building. I visited with them this morning, really, number two and number three are the only two that they don't agree with and that they would ask this board to grant some leniency to. But I'll let them make their request.
Bert, when you're talking about a durable and dustless surface, what, this is not including the surface we've kind of let go in the past, right?
Right, we thought like a recycled asphalt or some sort of asphalt millings that would be a little better than crushed limestone.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Yeah, has there been any complaints by the neighbors of dust created by this business at any time in the last 10 years?
Not that I'm aware of. I know this originally did come to us from a complaint, I don't know who it was, but somebody had tipped the city off to this outdoor storage going on. It had been going on for years without the city ever taking notice, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board members. I'm Jeff Nicholson, owner of P&amp;P Small Engines, 2715 East University. We own property 909 and 913 East 27th that are directly south of it. I was in front of you this spring and I just wanted to show you our sign and the new landscaping that we did do in front here. And, I did new, that's hard to see, it's dark, new full sod out front. We have been improving the property slowly as money allows some of the improvements we started this year before we realized that we weren't going to get, we, there wasn't going to be any rain for most of the season. So, it has been a challenge the last year to be an outdoor power equipment dealer who lives off of selling mowers and weaters. So, anyhow, as we go forward, I, I do have some concerns with point one of the staff recommendation, which is basically just a, as far as the site planning goes, as I understand it, needs to be done with a licensed engineer or something along those lines. And I'm seeing dollar signs when I see that. And right now, I've spent more than I should have spent this year already. As far as the dustless surface, we, we aren't running equipment around this property much. There, there, I've never seen dust come off the surface, but it's not a high-traffic area. It's, it's an area that we need for service mowers, it's an area we need for new equipment, so we have it on hand. If we do sell something during the day, we've got stock that we have access to. But I would like to, I guess, challenge number two is, the surface has been there for, on both sites, on 2715 and on the property immediately south, 913. The material that's on the ground now was there when I purchased both properties, I didn't add to that. So, as far as the 10-foot setback from the property line, I have constructed a fence that I have a picture of here. This is an eight-foot tall fence that runs all along the east side and follows the building back and around the corner there. That wasn't there previously, just added that this last fall. It is eight-foot tall, so there's not anything we're going to put up next to that fence that would be taller than that fence. So, I would ask that, that we get some relief on that. I met with the Fairground Neighborhood Association through this process, through the rezoning process, and kind of gave them the big picture of what we were trying to do. I have a letter of support from them. I've kept them updated on the process. They are in support of us.
Put that down on the.
Yep. But I guess in, in closing, we need that area to operate as we are. We can't get, we can't get our equipment in our doors, we can't get our inventory in our doors, and we're just not, we don't have the means to, to build right now, so. We're asking for relief in those areas and I appreciate it.
Questions, Mel?
Just two quick ones. When you built that nice fence you've got, did you get a permit for that at the time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's always good to hear.
It's been saved.
Yes, and based on the outdoor storage area you got, I see you got some nice gravel there now. If we were to limit your outdoor storage to just that area where you currently have the gravel, like, you know, you just can't keep putting in more gravel.
Yeah.
And storing more outdoor equipment, is that okay? Unless you would come back for more relief?
Well, I think that would be acceptable. I, I think there's enough area that has the gravel base now. And ideally, if, if we can have a couple of good years, I would like to put a building up.
Right.
I mean, that, the long-term plan is to expand and to hook onto the building and expand the showroom and shop, but we need, we need to have some good seasons.
Because right now, since the city wants a different type of surface than the one you even have, if it was more of a meet in the middle, you keep what you got, but no more expansion of it unless you'd comply with.
Right.
With the normal conditions.
Right, or I'd even be, I guess, I would hope in the next three years, we could have something done there with the building.
Yeah.
And at that point, if I didn't have something done, I would take care of the dustless surface.
Yes, okay. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. If you want to leave those pictures, we got to have those.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? I think we're going to get one.
I do have one.
Okay.
Donovan Zoning Enforcement, Chair, members of the board. Regarding the dustless surface, it's, we have required dustless surface since the 1950s as part of environmental impact directed by the state, I believe, clear back then. I don't like seeing not enforcing that across the board. I believe if they're going to store back there, they should have a dustless surface put in place. I think they've, they've been using it, not legally, and I think it's time to upgrade it to a legal surface at this point.
Linda?
But that, that area where they want to leave it without any, a dustless surface, that's where I believe they want to put a building at some point? Am I understanding that right?
If there's a long-term plan to put a building, I suppose the board could consider giving them a variance for a certain period of time in order to put the building up so we can have indoor storage and/or at that time, put a dustless surface down. That would maybe be a, let them have time to build the building or put the surface down, yes.
Okay, because I think I heard him say that that would be the plan.
I think we want to start making these more compliant as we go forward. They're asking us to allow them to do something that isn't allowed necessarily in the zoning district. And the variance is run with the land. If this gentleman should move or sell to somebody else, you are not just giving it to this person. And, you know, he has to meet the criteria for hardship on a variance, I'm not sure he's met that. But at the very least, be careful that when you give variances, you remember that it goes with the land and he may move out and you may have somebody else in there that isn't as conscientious. And we shouldn't be upgrading our properties in our city rather than allowing them to remain at a status quo that is less than desirable.
And I don't know if Eric can answer this or maybe Sue Ann can. One of the recommendations was any outdoor storage on the promise shall be in accordance with the site plan as approved.
Yes.
And his concern was, is that he would have to pay somebody to do that.
Yes, no different than any other.
That's always required, though.
Develops.
Okay.
You'd have to, you'd have to meet the requirements for a site plan.
Yeah, the site, a site plan is going to be required because he's expanding what we recognize as the use of the land.
Regardless.
But whether or not it requires a design professional.
Right.
Has to do with the degree of what he's doing.
Right.
If he's putting out millings and plantings, you can get by with a certified nurseryman and certifying your plantings. If you're going to put designed paving in there, then you need a, an engineered design and it'll require detention and that type of thing.
So.
The other thing is, the existing site already has an engineered site plan, so any amendment to that is going to drive it as well.
So, if we left that recommendation alone, the applicant would just have to work with you about whether it could be a nursery. you about whether it could be a nurseryman or...
Right. Depending on exactly the amount of improvements will dictate whether he needs to involve a design professional. But at a minimum, I think it's going to take a certified nurseryman to certify the planting plan. Which, a lot of times, wherever you buy the material, has somebody on staff that can do that for you.
We've talked a lot about dustless. Is it permeable just as important or more important for that big of an area? Because otherwise, you're going to have a lot of water runoff that we wouldn't have now.
Right. And the site plan will just determine whether they drain adequately. So if you... Again, Bert said that there's really no standards applicable, so we're sort of transferring them from a district that we would normally have those standards. And so a site plan, we would look at them, make sure that they drain. If they actually made a permeable paving, then they would have... If it was over a certain amount of area, then they would have to provide the required detention to meet that. Millings actually is more beneficial from that standpoint because it's not going to... It does allow some factor of infiltration versus all surface runoff. Does that make it clear as mud?
Yes.
That's very helpful.
Eric, I have a question. There is a requirement that any outdoor storage shall be set back at least 10 feet from any property line. It looks to me like he's built a fence, eight-foot-tall, near the property line. What would be the point of requiring him to put the vehicles 10 feet from the eight-foot fence?
This is the same as if it was a C1 for a parking lot. So we would require there to be a setback of parking or any type of use from at our district boundary. So that's really the only standard. If this was an M1 district, we would allow outdoor storage, it would actually be 25 feet. So I think there's the desire to have some clearance from that screen so that it's not... Everything's not stacked tightly against the screen. But I mean, if the real concern is whether it's obscured from the neighbor's vision, I'm not sure the 10 feet's going to make much difference unless, you know, everything's taller than the fence.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Well, I think that we should work here to make it work. He does have a nice piece of property there. But like Sueann said, I think we need to put a limit as to how long we can go without a surface, without having some sort of treatment down. So, you know, whether that's two years, or I heard him say three years, and he'd like to put up another building, but I don't think we should go any longer than that. And I... Other than that, I would probably go along with the staff recommendations. Staff recommends denial of the requested variance of 10 feet less than the minimum, required 10 feet setback. I'm okay... I mean, I think that that's good to have in there. At least it keeps it away from the neighbors. So if the applicant can live with everything else, I...
I think what we're trying to do is get to a compromise on that because you heard the zoning enforcement officer, and one of the toughest things, like she says, if we were to allow a dustless surface to take place, it stays with everybody. It stays with the land. So we want to safeguard some of the decisions that other people have been making in the past to make this a nice neighborhood. So I think what we're going to do, if it makes sense to you, is we'll take a look at maybe giving the variance, but only for a specific period of time, which would be, I think, you're looking at about three years. Now, what I can tell you is that if... We all hope rain comes and business conditions improve and everything.
Economic conditions. Snow.
We've got a lot of people in here that... If... And this is... I don't want to give you a complete ray of hope that this goes on, but in three years, if your financial condition hasn't improved and you may need to extend it, that might be something that you could approach, and hopefully, a few of the people will still be here on the board and remember this. But if we were to give you about a three-year timeframe, do you think you can at least try to make that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're talking three years? If we don't have a building, expansion or building?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
And like I say, I mean, we're not...
Or at the very least, come back and see us.
Yeah.
Put the building up or put some dustless surface down.
The idea is, we don't want to drive you out of business. You know, having people do business in the city of Des Moines is a good thing. But on the same token, we've got to listen to what city staff says, so we've got to have a little balancing act here.
I would just clarify, not grant it for three years. I would just say, grant it, but say the paving has to be installed within three years.
What if the building goes in?
Yeah, or the building.
Oh, okay.
But if any outdoor storage occurs?
Yeah. We're not telling them what they'll do at the end of three years. We're just telling them this ends at three years. That's it.
Okay.
But the outdoor storage, you say, is put in progress, correct? That's why I want to be sure that he doesn't have to come back in three years to have outdoor storage again, that he would just have to ask to have an unpaved surface in three years.
Right. That's the intent of the board.
Yes.
What about the setback? 10 feet.
Yeah, I think it should stay 10 feet.
But, I'm sorry.
I would move staff recommendations, and they are asking to deny the variance of 10 feet less than the minimum. And I think that a good compromise is to keep that 10 feet.
Has a setback.
Just for the setback, just like others. I mean, he's got a huge piece of property there.
It shouldn't be a big deal.
It shouldn't be a big deal.
Well, I would disagree. I would think that there is limited ability as he grows to move equipment around and storage. You're talking 10 feet on both property lines.
Look at all of the ladies got them.
If it was me, if my business grew like his business hopefully does, I would have to think of moving my business at some point, most likely out of Des Moines, which is what we seem to be good at. So I... And with the fence, as Mr. Clark said, I don't see what the big deal is about the setback.
It's 90 feet right now, so if he would lose 10 feet, he would be left with 80 feet width instead of 90.
Well, he's losing 10 feet on both sides.
Yeah, so then it'd be 130 rather than 140 more south.
Yeah. Well, he has large equipment that he's moving on.
What if we just said five feet so you can see your fence, maintain it, keep the weeds from growing up in it? Would that be a big hardship?
You can make that work.
And you can walk around the back of your equipment as well as the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
If everybody would be okay with that, I would make staff... Move staff recommendations with amending number two to say any outdoor storage shall occur on a durable and dustless surface within three years or have a building be built. And we would grant the variance for five feet less than the minimum, required 10 feet setback.
That would be an exception.
Okay, that's an exception. Good job.
And that's an easier standard to meet.
Okay. If that's acceptable to everybody, the applicant can live with it?
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all of us in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Aye. Motion carries seven to nothing. Hopefully, we won't see in three years because everything's going to be good and everything's according to code. Thank you. Item 16, exception in variance at 2610 Park Place.
This property actually isn't too far from the one on Zworth that you were considering. In fact, it might even be in the picture over here. Just a little bit further up the hill. The property is... Currently has this garage. If I can get Bert to widen it up a little bit here. See it a little bit better. They're looking to replace... This is the existing home on the property. That's a little bit... You get a better feel for where it sits to the street. This sort of slopes down from Park Place. And then these are also double frontage lots, which must have been a popular thing in this neighborhood. So if you look at this, both them and the lot to the east of them are double frontage. This actually has two separate dwellings on the same lot, and I don't know if some of you might remember that. Coming to the board at one time, they converted a garage or carriage house in the back here to a dwelling unit. Again, the slopes are drastically different between the north end and the south end of these properties. They're looking to do a garage, and I only have a large-size copy of this, so I'll have to stretch it out. They are proposing a 312 pitch with a front gable. So this is what would face to the north along Park Place with an eight-foot overhead door and an upper-level attic, narrow lap siding, vinyl-type material. And if we go to the other elevation, this is... This looks like this would be the west-side elevation because I believe that the pedestrian door would face the west towards the house. They do propose windows on the main level of the garage, but still leaving the upper-level plane with no openings. And then this gives you a sense of roof pitch profile. I guess staff's biggest concern is that the... Given the height of the garage, it probably should have some more compatibility with the main dwelling roof plane, given the scale of the height. And so, you know, you can do a hip roof design like the house on the garage. It would make it more compatible. And that can be done in a sort of a flat sense without giving too much height to the... They've actually got this additional little kind of bump-up gable that comes off the top of the hip. I don't think you'd want to see that on the garage as well, but give it a lower-profile hip design, and it would be more compatible. It would give it a little more overhang. Right now, it's got very little overhang, probably enough just for the eaves troughs to hang over the edge of the side of the wall. The other thing is, the staff would want to see some additional openings on that upper level to give it more scale. And then some kind of a dividing band that would break up the height of the garage again right at the floor level of the attic. This is the site plan that shows how it would relate to the house. So it would sit basically back in the same area. If you get too far back to the south, then the terrain starts creating problems for the thickness of the foundation and so forth. So I think it's reasonable to keep it where they're proposing it there. So staff is in favor of granting this appeal, but subject to getting those design considerations taken care of to make it more compatible so that we can pass the test for the essential character. Again, this is right in the shadow of the Capitol. It's near the historic Owl's Head neighborhood. It's not in the historic Owl's Head neighborhood, but it's close. So there's definitely a character to this area that we do want to protect. I better read off the conditions. Any detached garage is in compliance with applicable building codes with issuance of necessary permits. Also, that it should not be used for habitable purpose. Specifically, any detached garage shall be constructed with wider overlap cementboard-type siding. And again, maybe if they're going to re-sign the home with a narrower lap side, but right now, it's this wider... Bert, can you lighten the iris up on that? Might be hard to see, but there's... This is a wider lap on this house. I don't know if they're going to re-sign the home along with this. If they were going to go with a narrow on the home, then the narrow would be okay. But right now, we would say the wider overlap cementboard-type hip roof design that matches the existing dwelling. There shall be window openings on the longer side walls with contrasting siding band that circumscribes the building at the attic floor level. Final elevation shall be approved by the city planning administrator prior to issuance of permits because we know this will take a redesign. I guess if the board wants to see it come back to them, you could defer it back to the board versus having the planning administrator enforce that.
Eric, what happened to the variance?
The variance of the...
One story or the maximum one story?
Yeah, that would be... It should have said requested exception and variance.
Okay.
I apologize.
Questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Appicant or representative of the applicant?
I'm John Lemke at 2610 Park Place. That's my house. Thanks for considering this for me. We're building a new garage. We're going for a variance on the height because we want to put storage upstairs. We don't have a basement. And what you guys proposed is great. We've been talking about it already. When we originally designed it, that lean-to on the backside of the house, that's kind of the pitch that we were kind of matching up with. And we agree with you guys to more match the pitch of the main body of the house. We think it'll look better. And that has... Our house has one-by-two big pieces of siding on it, and we'll do the garage in that as well. And it will look really good. And windows, of course. I'm just totally agreeing with everything you guys say. Windows on the upper level, on the peak, and on the main level as well. And I think it ought to look pretty darn cool. So that's all I have.
Wow. That's great.
Yeah, I really appreciate it, guys.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board decision.
Second.
God, you guys are too quick. Okay, but moved in second. All of us in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Motion carries seven to nothing. I'll tell you what, you've got the express route on this one.
That is a record for something on the regular agenda.
Great job. Great presentation. Thank you. Item 17 is a variance at 3010 Raccoon.
Hopefully, these next two can go just as quick. They're both for DSL boxes for CenturyLink, formerly known as Quest. The city zoning ordinance requires that any public franchise utility box be set back at least five feet from the front property line. So they're requesting a waiver of that five-foot setback. On this one, on Raccoon Street, they're proposing a two-foot setback from the front property line. And the utilities would occur or would be placed within a, I believe, it's approximately four-foot by 12-foot area, easement area. It would be two...
Bert, we can't see it. We're a little hot here.
Yeah, I think you're hitting yourself.
Is there a fold in the paper, too? Yeah, that's why.
All right, sorry about that. All right, the easement area where the public franchise utilities would be, would be four feet from the sidewalk, however, only two feet from the front property line. So they are needing a variance of the provision that requires them to be at least five feet back from the front property line. The equipment that they're proposing looks sort of like this. I believe the maximum height would be 65 inches. Looks like a series of three boxes. Again, I just sketched this out. We've recommended that they provide the minimum required 15-foot vision clearance triangle. The proposed location could meet that 15-foot vision clearance triangle, so there's no concern there. Here's a photo of what it looks like today. It's just one box right now. They would be removing that and then adding three new boxes. Here's the box from another angle. And then we did not get any incentive card back either way.
Is there a bicycle rack proposed? Is there a bicycle rack proposed to go with that?
Yeah, it looked like a kid's playground. But again, really, the only issue is the replacement equipment has to be five feet from the front property line. They're wanting to do it two feet. So we've recommended approval. It's subject to a few conditions. And the first one is there should be no equipment within the 15-foot by 15-foot vision clearance triangle. Two, that they plant at least three shrubs between the utilities and the front property line. Three, the equipment being installed in accordance with the necessary permits. And then the next three are just standard requirements that are applicable anyway. I just put them in here so they would be reminded that they should be placed... The box should be placed in orderly manner. Five, the utility cabinets should be of neutral colors. And six, the utility meters on the side should be screened from public view.
Bert, I have a question. Don't we have some of these utility cabinets that have pictures of plants and things like that on them?
See that one at Oak Boulevard and University?
Yeah, that's kind of nice, you know, kind of classy, you know? It certainly makes it look better.
So you're saying you want to scratch number five to play this?
I'd like something more aesthetically pleasing. Just a thought.
And Bert, a question on planning the shrubs. Between the swing of the cabinets, which are shown here, and then back to the color photo with the little bicycle in it, so where would the shrubs really go? Would they be between the cabinet and the sidewalk?
Yeah, there would be a four-foot area there. And I could let the applicant speak to that.
Well, I don't think it can go in front, because that's where the cables come from.
Yeah, because I know sometimes they've got their own restrictions. So would they have much room to do what you're requesting?
I guess if you think about the underground...
Yeah.
Feet.
Wires or...
Right.
Right.
Cables running to it. I guess I would let the applicant...
Yeah, maybe side and back.
Address that.
Or maybe re-shrub the neighbor's yard.
Who knows? Okay.
We'll address that. Any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Appicant or representative of the applicant?
My name's Matthew Bram. I'm with CenturyLink, 2103 East University Avenue, Des Moines. The cabinet that we are basically installing... What we're actually doing with the existing cabinet that's in place is removing the shell of that cabinet and installing a new, actually a little bit wider cabinet over the top of it. So it actually gets replaced. It will match in color to the two new cabinets that we're installing. So it... The older cabinets, and this one and then the next one we're going to talk to, are green in color. Some of them are graffiti and just getting old. So we actually, as part of this request, we're replacing those old cabinets with cabinets that have new doors, new equipment. But we're allowed to keep the guts of the inside of the old cabinet, which prevents us from having to make large pits in the easement, do major cable splicing below the old cabinet, and getting a new one in place. Much, much easier for us to utilize the insides of the contents of those cabinets and then provide the additional capacity we need on the backside. So in the new cabinet... The old cabinet, the doors swing in one direction. The new cabinet, the doors will swing in that direction as well as the backside also.
And your comments about the shrubs?
Typically, we've been asked to do shrubs in the past, and we've done that. My concern with that is the maintenance of the shrubs.
Right, yes.
Typically, they tend to... They grow a lot faster than our cabinets do.
Right.
So, you know, we tend to rely on the property owners...
Yes.
...to mow those existing sites and also to maintain those shrubs. And if that's not done, you tend to have more of a problem with the shrubs there than trying to cover anything up. It also limits our ability to work with them. We do sometimes have to get trucks up to them.
Right.
These are fiber-fed cabinets, so we have to get... Fiber splicing is done in a controlled environment, so we have to get a truck fairly close to the equipment so that we can get those splices up into a controlled environment and work with them. And the shrubs and fences and stuff like that tend to hinder our ability to do that.
So would you say you don't want to have any shrubs at all, then?
I would prefer not to. That would be my request and CenturyLink's request. But we do accommodate... You know, if it is a requirement, we can accommodate that.
I'll check Beaver and Adams. We put the... Let's put DSL in there. And I thought shrubs were going in. I see it every single day. There's no... Never been a shrub put in there. If it doesn't work, that's fine. I'm just... It was one of the things that we had put in, so...
I'd rather see it painted pretty. I'd rather see...
Without spray paint.
One thing, Bert, one thing I should mention about the labeling that some companies do. These are the equipment, and two of the cabinets do actually dissipate heat.
Sure.
And so those cabinets have a venting on them and a louver system built within the cabinet that allow that heat to dissipate through the cabinet. And if we start painting those cabinets dark colors, which a lot of cities have requested, like dark colors as opposed to the... The lighter colors are for a reason. They don't absorb heat like darker colors do. And the cabinets are louvered, so they do dissipate heat.
I just think there needs to be something to make it...
There is a cabinet at the corner of, what is it, Oak Boulevard and University? That it's just... It's different, but it's really nice. Is it? Yeah.
It looks like trees or something.
Sits next to a doctor's office.
It blends in. You don't really notice it.
Isn't it on the doctor's office property?
Yeah, it's on that dentist's property.
Yeah.
Corner there. It's cool.
You should check it out, Matthew. You can propose that in your next design.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I think in this case, I don't know if planning of shrubs would really help what's going on here. Normally like to see that. And sometimes we've got a little more space to work with when these things are going in on one side or the other. But it looks like we've got driveways close by on both sides and playground activity. And I wonder if we'd be causing more harm than good in this case.
Yeah, that picture kind of says a thousand words, you know?
Yeah.
There's not much you can do there.
And no direct offense, but I, you know, I'm not sure that the landowners would be the ones that would want to or would step up to do this shrub maintenance.
That is right. When you're splicing fiber or splicing cable, you don't want to be out in the rain doing it. So you're going to be bringing a truck, tent, getting down there and doing it, so...
And if we got heat dissipation...
Maybe just some pre-lights on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wish we could do something to make it... To make it look nice, rather than just those barren things. I mean, really, I'm serious. If they could paint it and decorate it and make it like a mural or something, I'd like that a whole lot better.
Yeah.
If I can see.
Yeah.
If you look at the pictures, we've actually had extensive conversation with the property owner. And I think one of these pictures you can see...
And is it... Is the owner... Is that owner occupied, Matthew? Do you know?
No, it's not.
All right, so it is a rental property?
Yes, on both sides. It's kind of hard to see, but there's a fence that... It looks like somebody's attached a snail line to it.
Did they need a permit for that?
We've actually discussed with the property owner removing that fence and trying to clean up the area in coordination with this installation.
Okay.
So, you know, we have... We have had those conversations, and we are trying to do our best to make that...
Is that a functional fence or just an old in post with its support there?
It's an in post, and there is a fence, but it's knocked down and laying on the ground.
So... So you're kind of saying that by your own good intent, you'll try to improve the look, however it may be?
Yes.
Rather than us tell you exactly what to do?
I'm game with that.
Okay, I'm fine with that, too.
You can put the satellite dish on the tree.
So...
We could attach a part cabinet to it.
Do you normally do silver cabinets as an option?
We do not.
Could we say tan green or earth tone?
Ours are beige, so yes.
How's that, Linda?
Beige.
Beige close?
I'm not going to... Yeah.
It's an earth tone.
All right. Thank you. We're back to board decision, so...
I'd make a recommendation to approve the variance, subject to conditions one, three, four, five, and six, scratching two, and amending five to say or earth tone, and scratch the word silver.
Mm-hmm.
And I realize tan, green are probably earth tones to begin with, but...
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jake. I thought it was going to go silent here for a second. It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. And I think you're right in the box again. Item 18. Make it clear. Variance at 320 East 22nd Street.
Item 18 is very similar to the last one. Another replacement DSL box. The only difference here is it's also two feet from the front property line. The only difference is it's with... Near an alley rather than a driveway. So we've recommended that they provide the minimum required 15 by 15 vision clearance triangle for the alley. And again, hopefully you can see in this picture, that shouldn't be a problem here at all either. In this case, we did have three cars come back in opposition, but they were all from property owners on the block to the east, so...
Do they not want telephone?
They don't have computers.
The utilities would be right here. And just a variance of the requirement that they be five feet from the front property line. So we've recommended approval, subject to the same conditions as before. Make your job easier, just willing to change number five to say earth tone rather than silver.
And what are you going to do about number two?
I guess staff would probably recommend that you leave that in there, but you take it up.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
You can have a street view picture like you had with the other owner.
Yeah, I can do that.
I don't quite see where we'd put shrubs and how they would survive.
There we go. They would maintain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like we got issues with maintenance on now.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Appicant or representative of the applicant? I don't have much to say on this one.
That's a big hint, huh?
Yeah, pretty much the same scenario. This will be an overlay of the existing cabinet. All of our equipment's going to go directly behind it. We have spoken with the property owner. We are going to replace their fence and restore their fence to its original or better condition around our private easement.
Okay.
And that house is also a rental.
Okay.
So again, with the shrubs, I'm all for shrubs when it's good for everybody.
Right.
But being on an alley like that, as they grow, you tend to get vision issues and also maintenance issues with the property owner.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board decision.
I'd make a motion to approve the variance, subject to the same conditions as the previous item that I amended.
You know what that is, Bert? All right. Do you hear a second?
Second.
It moved in second. And all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Couple of express routes for you there. You did pretty good. Let's... This one might... Why don't we take about a five-minute break and get back here at 3:30? We'll pick up item 19. We'll pick up item nineteen.
The subject property is just west of forty-third Street on the north side of University Avenue. It is in the Waverly Park neighborhood area. It's currently being used as a barber shop, which is a permitted use in the C zero residential, commercial residential district. Gives you a sense. And there's a few other professional offices that, you know, go all the way to, that are scattered in here that go all the way to Forty-second Street on the north side, and a few on the south side as well. Originally, this was granted for, when it was still residentially zoned and allowed a dental office. I'm sorry, was it a dental office?
Yes, that's what you have.
Yeah. And when they retired, they sold to the current owner. The problem is that at the original granting of relief, it was only, it was only tied to that owner occupant at that time. Well, it got rezoned in the interim, but the zoning never gave it any allowances either because in C zero, parking must be kept out of the front yard setback to sort of preserve that residential character. Where C zero was meant to be a transitional zoning between commercial areas and residential areas. Perspective of it. You might see here that the neighboring property to the west also has parking in the front yard. So, essentially, when this changed hands, that, that relief was lost. The other thing is, is there was a point in time where this, in two thousand and six, where the previous owner, the dental office owners repaved it. And there was actually an enforcement case at that time, and I can't really explain why that wasn't.
It resolved?
Yeah. I don't, I don't, it was closed on the record, and I'm not sure what the, there's no record of a determination that's made or anything. As you can see, the date on these photos was in two thousand and six. Brand-new paving that went right up to the sidewalk here, which is actually a problem because the property line's actually about a foot in, and so technically it can't even encroach without having an approach permitted in front of it. Which in the area, you know, where the sidewalk is, there is the approach, or where, where the approach is, they can build it to get access to the property. So, staff believes that the original granting had some bearing in terms of giving the ability for this property to be used for that professional office purpose with some amount of parking, and that really probably was only reasonable within the front yard area. If you look to the rear, there's some area that, and people might cut through there anyway, but there's kind of a limited area of ability to get by here with two-way traffic and serve that with off-street parking. And there's terrain difference there, too. The original finding of the board seems to be reasonable. However, staff also believes that we need to take care of this issue with separation. Well, at the time, the board did require that they have it two foot off the property line, which basically meant three feet from the sidewalk. And staff believes that's an adequate amount of distance to get a area planted without, you know, the applicant indicated it would probably turn into mud, which if it was a lot narrower than that, it probably would. But, but also, no car then is that close where the door swings out, it would hang over to the sidewalk. So, there's a couple of reasons why you want to have some amount of setback from the front property line there. So, staff believes that we should uphold the spirit of the original granting for the previous owner. We think that their, their basis for having parking there is valid for the same reasons, but we also think that the board's previous relief was also valid, ensuring that the parking wouldn't be a problem for the pedestrians on the sidewalk. And so, we think that an amended appeal to the same requirement, or same appeal as previous is appropriate. So, denial of the requested appeal, however, we recommend approval of twenty-eight feet less than the thirty.
Does that map?
I had it out when I, here we go. So, there is some objection. I think a lot of the concerns you're reading are more to do operationally than maybe the issue with the actual parking being located there. So, I guess I would caution you to look at the criteria that you have in front of you. I know you're always mindful of the impacts, too, so.
So, your recommendation is that they go there and they cut off two feet of concrete along, along, or three feet of concrete along the sidewalk and, and put in grass?
Didn't restore that yet.
And, and then put in grass?
Then people wouldn't park right up against the sidewalk.
Right. And, and that's what staff is recommending.
Yeah, we think that's reasonable.
Right. You don't think it's reasonable that we just deny it?
If you deny it, then I think there's a lot of challenges in providing the parking necessary to operate the business in that property.
Okay.
Eric, one of the cards I don't get it, it says this is a four-unit residential building?
Yeah, I, I need some help with this, too. Waverly Park Neighborhood talks about tenants and guests of tenants. That doesn't sound like getting a crew cut at the barber shop.
Isn't there parking behind this building?
No. There's a slab.
It looks like it. There used to be a garage back there.
Well, it looks like it's got a pretty square, larger backside to this building. It's not just this little cottage.
I have a picture from the back.
Maybe the.
There was some, you know, there was some comments that were saying that there was
I mean, wouldn't it be just eight tenants?
Illegal, inoperable vehicles stored there or something, and I.
This is the four units.
I actually went around back and, that wasn't the case. So, I'm not sure if they're not getting the right property, but, you know, the building next door.
Boy, that, yeah, that, maybe that's what they're talking about.
Circulation in here. I have to look at the property records to see what that is. There's actually parking in the front yard on this building as well, with someone around the back, backside, too.
This, this letter is signed by Christine Pardee, and forty-three oh nine university is the property she's referencing.
She's two over from the west.
She's usually pretty sharp on things, I'm surprised that, okay.
Did the notice get sent out, maybe, I mean, because the cards are, are saying that it's a four.
Yeah, forty-three oh nine university.
This is the notice that was sent out.
She's referencing the address in question, but it sounds like she's confusing it with a neighboring property.
But then the card would be two.
Right.
How could two people make them?
I think her complaints come from citizens that have talked to the association.
Actually, though, we have enforcement pictures, like the, this property did have the barbecue set up in front of it, and I don't have those pictures in the file.
And it did have cars for sale, potentially, with signs in their windows, that's another complaint.
I don't think we have any pictures of that.
Okay.
And so, but we did have pictures of enforcement complaint.
All right.
I apologize, I thought we had those in there.
If, and kind of back to the parking thing, we can resolve this, but with the parking, if we get the three feet of space, will you require them to stripe remaining spaces or provide one handicap spot? Would you require them to stripe it then and have one handicap spot?
Four spaces or less, they don't have to strip.
They don't? All right, okay. So, they just cut it back and they figure out how to park? Okay.
But you do need to give them the adequate dimensions to have the four spaces. So, that, that's, I think that the argument was made actually in the original relief at that time, that this width was needed for four, four vehicles, and so this would accommodate that. They also get an additional one along the west side of the building.
So, even with what staff's recommending, they'd still have four spaces? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. If you look at this, too, this is the older picture.
One, two, three.
So, you take three feet off of it, you know, you're getting.
You'd still have two parking spaces before the black little SUV there. Okay.
Can we see the pictures from the enforcement?
Well.
Or the complaints?
Can you get tie marks?
That concrete looks real new, so I wonder if that was at the time of the enforcement?
Some of the ones that are dated were from the enforcement, one of the enforcement pieces, I guess I did have the ones from the.
Chair boards who end up in the zoning enforcement offices should be noted that forty-three oh five, the neighboring property, has a certificate for four units as a rental.
Okay. So, somebody's.
Must have been some confusion.
Okay.
There's some enforcement.
And Sue, Andy, do we know what kind of a picture we're going to be looking at?
And I don't care if I see pictures, I just would like to know what's been going on.
Yeah, there's a transient vendor set up.
And Sue, you will print the, print that out and put a copy in the file.
Absolutely.
Are those tacos, or?
Doesn't matter if they're French fries or Polish sausage.
Where's the grease trap?
That's right.
I think they said barbecue.
Yeah. Texas style.
Long table.
Yeah, yeah. Nice tablecloth.
Having a picnic smoker.
So, that is at this property in question, not at the apartment? Okay.
That was in oh nine.
Okay. That's a long time ago.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric. Applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Lyman. Me and my wife own the property at forty-three oh nine university. We bought it in two thousand and eight and have rented it out to the same person shortly after that. The parking lot was poured in two thousand and six. We have never known of a problem there with that part. Referencing, there was a variance in nineteen seventy-six or seventy-seven to keep the parking lot near the sidewalk, and there's a property right to the west of that that has the same thing, and there's other properties around there that have the same condition. The lot is small, there's, and, and the building's small, too. There's not hardly any parking there. It's four tight spaces now. The backyard would, would not be a good place to park, and it's small, too. Referencing the complaints from the Waverly Neighborhood Association, the, there was a, someone selling something there. I got a letter from the city in two thousand and nine, the summer, and I talked to the renter about it, and he said he would get them out of there. And I don't know, I've never seen it, but there's obviously some pictures. It sounds like they were, the apartment complex is right to the east of that. So, I think it was kind of in between that area. It was partially on my property. I do not, did not approve that at all. Neither did the renter. And I, I don't think there's been any more problems with that part. The Neighborhood Association, Christine Pardee, has said she's contacted me numerous times. I received a call from her in the spring of this year, only one time, and she was concerned about the people coming and going. I informed Ms. Pardee that he was a barber, and he was a black barber, and I would expect people to be coming and going to get their haircuts, and most of his clients are probably black. The renter is a full-time worker with the city. He does this as a side job. He also goes to school full-time. I, I go by the property probably a couple times a month, or if I'm out and above, just drive by. I've never seen any for-sale cars, cars for sale or anything. I try to, this is the only property I have. I try to run it within city, whatever the city wants and stuff. We called and made sure, before we rented it out, made sure we had all our ducks in a row, and nothing was said. They said the only thing that we couldn't sell animals and food products out of it. And we, we keep the property up, and Ms. Pardee is actually, her house is right behind that property, and I think it's, I think it's personal on her causing me problems. That's just my feeling.
Let me ask you, the cities are recommending that you cut three feet of that concrete back.
Right.
Are you opposed to that?
Yes.
Okay.
The parking is very tight right now. If you cut three feet off, just if we ever get snow again, and we did have snow the two thousand and. If you cut three feet off, just if we ever get snow again, and we did have snow the 2009, 2008. Last year, we didn't get much snow, but when we, when we do get snow, the driveway going in, which. The driveway going in, your university is four lanes and it's, it's tight getting in and out of there. You go in, if you're plowing, you're going to be basically pushing the snow straight back and then pushing it to the side of the yard or to the west side. It will become a mud pit. It's going to be a mess there, even with rain too. There, when you start, the snowplows aren't, or the trucks plowing snow aren't going to care whether there's sidewalk or there's cement there or grass. They're going to plow it right over. It's going to be, it'll be a mess. It'll be a mess. I am opposed to it. It's, it's been like this for at least 30 years. This driveway is newer. It's a nice, it's clean, it's kept up. So yes, I am opposed to it.
And if I could just ask you, sir, how do you know it's been that way for 30 years?
Because the, that's the variance that was placed in 1977 was for the same thing.
And do you have that?
Yes.
But was the variance to park in the front yard, but did it truly allow pavement to go to the sidewalk?
I think it wasn't actual pavement. It was like a blacktop or asphalt type.
Okay, but that asphalt came all the way to the front sidewalk at that time, more than likely? I think with aerial photos, we could determine that pretty quickly.
Right.
The round, it wasn't for the same thing.
Okay.
It's for two feet less, just as we're recommending.
Okay. So the '06 repaving resulted in not only, it was an expansion then in '06?
That was beyond the previous relief.
Can, can you read that back for us real quick, the highlighted or whatever the important part is?
Well, it just says the appeal, but does it, I mean, you weren't granted, I mean, it wasn't granted, correct?
Yes, it was. They, they granted them the right to park in the front yard.
But without the, the two feet, without the.
That seems to be the question.
Right.
To what exactly was granted?
Our diligent attorney can help us out here.
What was before the Board of Adjustment was, yeah, for 28 feet of the minimum required, 30 foot. And then, like you do on all court cases, you run to the lax page and see if you won or lost. And, and it was granted, the appeal I was applied for was granted. So what they approved was 28 of the 30, which left two foot.
Two foot, so.
But it's three feet of the sidewalk.
What is?
Okay.
What you're asking?
The property line is.
Oh, the, the property line is, okay. So, yeah, so by default, it's encroached.
Right.
By another foot.
So what, what is there now is, was never approved?
Not that I'm, that I'm.
Right.
Okay, there. That's, that's what I wanted.
And again, like I said, we enforced on it in 2006 and what happened to that, I don't know.
Okay.
Is this the city's exhibit or the appellant's?
Cities, isn't it?
Cities exhibit here?
Yeah, that's our copy.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Because what I heard, what I heard, what I heard you say, sir, was that you were, that it was granted, but what this paper is saying that it was not granted.
I, this is new to me, so I might not be understanding the lingo that's going on with this, so.
That's okay, right, right. Just grant.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
My, my, what I'm reading here is that the board granted a variance of 28 feet, feet are than the minimum feet. So my, my interpretation is it was like that.
Right.
And then in 2000, it was six years ago that this was, the concrete was over six years ago. And then all of a sudden, it's a problem. It never has been and it just is suspicious to me with the phone call I received earlier this spring.
Sir, what's before us now, what you've filed here, is for a variance of 30 feet less than the minimum required, 30-foot front yard setback. And what the 1977 appeal decision says is that they granted it for 28 feet less than the 30 feet. Okay?
Okay.
So, so you got 28 of the 30, okay? The question is the other two feet, which evidently may have been filled in in 2006.
Okay.
In other words, it probably was easier than building a form to come up next to the sidewalk and pour the concrete.
Okay.
And that's, that's the problem.
But I think, you know, tearing that two feet out will, will make it, it'll make it even more of a problem too.
How, how many barber chairs do you have there now or how many, is there just one guy?
One guy, yeah.
Okay, so if he parks there and three customers are there all lined up in order, that's four cars on the property, right?
And that's.
And if you do that, that fills it up right, right then and there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only open on the weekends.
Right. Just open on the weekends, not open during the weekday?
He goes to school full-time right now, so sometimes he, but he also works with the city full-time. So sometimes, like when he's not in school, he'll.
So do people just call and make an appointment? He doesn't have regular hours then?
That's my inter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does he have any sign out front? I didn't even see a sign for it.
Well, he has one in the window. It says barber and then it says his hours of office.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Any last questions for staff?
I do, I was going to ask if they could pull up that picture that shows the properties because Mr. Lyman indicated that there were some properties that are similar to his. And I noticed that when I looked at one of the pictures. I thought, well, they're doing it too. So I'd like to be able to look at that, those color.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but did you have the aerial, but again, it might be harder to see with just the thickness of our property line.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't the aerial. It was more the smaller one where you, it was some photographs or something. It wasn't that one.
Well, there's some that have the parking in the front yard, but I'm not sure they're going zero lot line.
Yeah.
Okay, it was. There was, there was another one. Keep going. There was another one that.
I know what you're talking about, Cindy.
These are the only, these are the two from the previous, the 2006 timeframe. So.
Right there.
That's his property. Oh, you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, and it's right up to the sidewalk too.
Right.
Well, they might have them in. I don't know.
And then, isn't Collins and Hip is down the street?
Because even if you gave them 100% relief, they should be only at the property line.
Unless we grant.
Well, you don't have any, you don't have any authority to give them the foot between the property.
They'd have to enter into a lease?
That would have to be in a different thickness under a sidewalk permit. So that's, that's the whole point is regardless, the foot has to come out. So, I mean, if we're going to enforce this thing.
If we're going to take one foot out, take the other two?
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I'm saying three is a better situation because.
It makes sense.
That way, any door swings aren't going across the property line when people park and get out.
Right. And you can actually maintain that area better in established plan and whatever. Okay.
That's probably why they didn't go zero back in time, but I can't really.
Okay.
Say that for sure. I was, I was trying to interpret things that were said in those minutes of the meeting.
Just so it's clear in my mind, Eric. The city sidewalk sits on city property.
Yes.
And are you saying that besides the city sidewalk that's owned by the city, the city owns an additional foot of ground?
Generally and usually, and sometimes more.
You mean you don't know?
If we have a survey.
You don't have a survey. You do not have a survey.
No, we don't have.
You're guessing.
Well, there's at least a foot because we need a foot of back slope when we install the lots. For the, for the construction of the sidewalk. So, because we always require that there be a foot of clearance to put the sidewalk in so that we can actually, if we have the sidewalk to zero lot line, then we can't even get on their property to, to dig out the sidewalk. So the standard is, the standard would say there's a foot there. Sometimes there's even more than a foot.
Even with a rough estimation of the overlay of the parcels, do the parcels kind of show that they're back from the sidewalk a bit here in your overlay?
Yeah, I mean, Tom, Tom's right. I couldn't say without a survey that it's actually where the property line is, if it's a foot or if it's two feet or if it's six inches or if, you know. But under our standard, it would have a foot there from the sidewalk. So if he can show with the survey that his property line is at the sidewalk, then it would be two feet.
So, so why'd you bring this up, Eric? Because the variance is 28 feet less than the minimum 30, so it's two feet. And I, I realize with a good intent what you're saying, but, but, but really, all that would be before us is the variance of the two feet less than the minimum 30 foot. And then maybe he needs to work that out with engineering if he's encroaching.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm saying. You guys do whatever, if you give them 30 of the 30, we're still going to.
Get a.
Look at the, at the foot, yeah.
Okay, so it's not really our decision on that part of where the boundary line is. I think you'll be doing your homework.
So you understand.
But as Roger Braun will tell you, he could apply for a lease.
Yes, he can.
Yes.
And he has done those before.
But the other, the other thing that I should point out is that the reason, you know, if you allow vehicles to.
Right.
Go across that, it's not designed with the right thickness, like it is where the approach is.
Right, we understand that too.
When people, people actually start parking on the sidewalk, it's problematic.
Yep, I don't like that either.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public portion. Go to board decision.
I would move staff recommendations.
And I would second that.
Any discussion? Yeah, I don't think that, boy, this is much ado about nothing in my mind. What we have is we have a fellow that has, has a right to, to, for 28 feet of the 30 foot.
Mm-hmm. Which is what we're off.
And then he says, he, he acquired this property four years ago or something, after this lot was already there. So I suppose he could sue the previous owner of the property.
And hire attorney to do that.
And say, you know, you warranted title and it's, and I don't have good title.
Okay.
Or we could let the city enforce what they will and just grant him the 30 feet, which is all we can do. Now, I, I mean, I don't see the point of having him pick up the two, the two or three feet, whatever it is, of, of concrete. And it doesn't improve the property. It doesn't improve the neighborhood.
I agree with Tom.
Okay. Let's put it to the, put it to the test.
It might improve the neighborhood.
Well, I think he still has a variance, okay?
He, he might.
Of 28?
Of 28.
Right.
Right.
But I think what Eric's saying.
We deny this.
Yes, yes.
Then the city can go ahead and.
And he'll have to rent a concrete saw the same way and cut out another foot of concrete.
City can enforce what they will. Because they're going to have to have a survey before they enforce anything.
Okay. Well.
But I think we ought to save him that, that problem.
Right.
I think we ought to grant him 30 feet, which is all we can do. Well, the, the motion is to take staff's recommendation, which is the 28, the original, the 28 of the 30.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? They moved and seconded. Those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries, fails 42. Let's listen to a second. We, we do need a second motion, folks. Yes, I, I move to grant him the variance of 30 feet less than the required 30-foot front yard setback. And an exception of nine feet less than the minimum required, 24 feet of maneuvering for the 90-degree parking spaces. Which is all we can do. Yeah, I mean, the city's going to take whatever they want anyway.
Yeah.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries 42.
Okay. Came out in the wash. That's okay.
Item 20, and we have the crime view on this, folks. It's conditional use permit and variances at 1824 Hubble.
Mr. Chair members of the board, the request before you is twofold. One, they want to obtain a conditional use permit for a liquor store to allow expansion of an existing liquor store. And then two, they also want a variance of the required 30-foot front yard setback. They're proposing to have a 21-foot front yard setback. The subject property is the SQ Liquor Store at the corner of Hubble Avenue and East Grand. It came before you in January when they were granted the conditional use permit to have a liquor store in the existing building. They are now proposing to expand the footprint of that building so that they can sell additional products such as groceries and other hygiene products. But they would still be considered a liquor store because they would still have more than 40% of their sales coming from liquor, beer or wine and tobacco products. Since they're expanding a liquor store, they're subject to the recently adopted separation requirements that City Council adopted last September. And that requires a fourth mile separation from any other business cell with a Class E liquor license. They do meet that requirement. There aren't any others within a quarter mile. However, they're also required to provide 500 feet of separation from any church, school, park or daycare. And they do not meet that requirement. We have a church, the St. Peter's Catholic Church, which is within 160 feet. There's the Ashfield Park to the north, which is within 253 feet. And then we have two in-home daycares, one of those at 1813 East Grand Avenue that is within 237 feet. And then another one at 1828 Capital Avenue that is within 490 feet. So it needs variances to the separation requirements for those. Like I mentioned, they have the existing liquor store. They're proposing two building additions, one on the west, east side of the building for a cooler and then an additional area on the south side of the building that would be used for displaying groceries and other convenience store items. The addition would be within nine feet of the front property line, which requires this board to grant a variance of the required front yard setback. The existing building is nine feet. There's a canopy, front porch canopy around the east and south sides of the buildings that would be removed. Exhibit C is a diagram they provided that shows the existing layout of the, of the business. And then Exhibit D is the proposed layout. The cooler addition on the east side would be here. And then the addition on the south side, you can see they're proposing to sell grocery items, ice cream, milk, other convenience store items. So they're really intending to increase their product selection. But like I mentioned, they'd still be considered a liquor store since they wouldn't meet the 40% threshold. Here's a photo of the site looking north along, from the intersection of Hubble and East Grand Avenue. This is looking kind of southwest from this brick street. Here's Des Moines Street on the north, that runs on the north side of the site. And then this is looking to the east along Grand Avenue. And you can see this canopy is nine feet from the property line. The addition would follow that roof line and maintain a nine-foot setback along Hubble Avenue. Exhibit H is the list of police calls from the past year. I believe there are three, so nothing too significant there. Then the consent map, we did have a petition submitted and three comment cards, all in support. in support, so, that's going around, because I did not hear back from the Capital East Neighborhood Association. So, as you know, with the conditional use permit, there's a set of criteria that they have to meet, one of those being the separation requirements, which they do not meet, and then, another is that the proposed use can't have any impacts, negative impacts, on surrounding residential uses. As you can see from the aerial, there are several residences within the immediate vicinity, so, staff's concerned that putting, expanding a liquor store, that close proximity to residential uses is also detrimental. So, for those reasons, we feel they don't meet the criteria for granting conditional use permit. They have asked for a variance to the separation requirements. We also feel they do not meet those requirements. In order to grant a variance, the board must find that there's no other economic use of the property. We feel that there is other economic uses of the property. It's an existing liquor store, they can continue to operate as a liquor store in accordance with their conditional use permit. So, we also understand that Zone C, too, which allows a host of other permitted commercial uses, so, we don't feel that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return from the other, any other permitted uses. And then, we also are concerned that the use to be authorized by the variance would alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, given the close proximities of those residential properties to the north and west. And you can see several of those dead, submit support, so, you can take that into consideration.
One of these cards was from somebody out on 51st Street. I mean, I'm sure it's just the lay-in donor, but, I mean, that person doesn't.
The applicant dropped off that petition yesterday. I don't know if he had it at his counter for customers to sign, or if he actually.
No, no, she means the cards.
The card.
Oh, the cards.
One of the cards.
What was the name of that?
Erin Page. Says capital improvement is good for the neighborhood, but he doesn't live in the neighborhood.
Is 203 the number on the card?
Yes. Shows he lives on 51st Street. I guess I can't speak to.
Okay.
If it's Erin Page that's on Des Moines Street there, his personal residence may be at 51st Street.
But a family member lives in the house, then, or something.
Yeah.
They just own it as an absentee home?
Yeah, he has a, it says consent there, sees, can't see it real well, but.
But, and then, my other question is, is if you read the petition, it says, "We want to expand our area for food items." It doesn't say that he's gonna increase for the liquor store, but you just said that part of the expansion was for a cooler, so, wouldn't that be for liquor and beer?
I would assume so.
So, I'm not sure that this petition, the people signed the petition, they're not, they might have signed it saying, "Oh, we're gonna add food," but it looks like, from the site plan, that they're just gonna expand their liquor, which they could do. They could do no food if we, if we grant this, they could say, "Forget the milk and, and juice, we're gonna just make it into a huge liquor store," correct?
Well, right now, they have the ability to make the entire.
Correct.
Business a liquor store.
Correct. But if we grant them to make it bigger, then it's an even bigger liquor store, correct?
With the conditional use permit, they would be able to exceed 40% of the fails.
That's, yeah.
And that could go all the way from, up to 100% with the conditional use permit.
And Bert, the separation distance of 500 feet from, quote, churches, St. Peters is listed, as well as another one, straight across Hubble to the southeast where the former Quick Trip was located with the big parking lot, that's like a Catholic council, I don't know if it's an office or a community center, or food bank. Since that's operated and owned by a church, does that count as a church, or, okay, so community services from churches don't necessarily count?
Right.
Just an existence of a place of worship?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then, like I mentioned, we recommend a denial, but.
Yep, okay.
If the board grants this, this does get forwarded to City Council for their review. They could remand it to this board, the council can overturn it, they can just remand it to this board. You can choose to accept your initial decision, or to reopen the hearing.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Bert. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. Thanks for hearing this. Terry Anderson, 2010 Suffolk Road, Oscars, Iowa, owner TJ Construction. I'm the contractor involved in this. You should have a petition signed by 67 different individuals in the neighborhood. I'm half for that. I question the cooler. The cooler going in is a cooler only for milk and dairy products. That's why they need that cooler. They now have a beer cooler on the west side. This new addition is, try to move more towards a convenience store rather than a liquor store. At this time, and the owner will admit to you, he does not meet his 40%. To get in compliance with that, it's a very small building there, and they do not have the facilities to expand within that building to add additional grocery items. I fully understand your guys' concern on a liquor store, and I fully support Des Moines' support, or position on a liquor store. We are not proposing to build a liquor store. We are going to build an area for a convenience store only, and that can be monitored by the city. The CUP permit that's in place can be revoked at any given time. If they don't meet whatever they're saying, they can go in front of the council and be revoked. I think everybody knows that. They've been in business there since 2009. They were granted the CP, CUP in 2012. They went out throughout the neighborhood and got petition signed by the people in the neighborhood, which you guys have a copy of. I want to stress to you that I am being stressed that it's convenient store items only. It is not for the expansion of the liquor store. If it was for the expansion of the liquor store, I'd walk out the door. I'm a non-drinker, and I don't believe in expanding liquor stores anymore than anybody else. So, I firmly believe that it is for the convenience store, which can be monitored by the city of Des Moines in several ways. They have had three police calls in the last year. They were initiated by the owner there. They do have nine security cameras on the building, throughout the inside and outside of the building. We are not imposing any closer to the street than the existing building is now. The canopy that's on the front of the building is covering a cement walk, which is about six foot wide. That's gonna be the width of the new cooler. It's a very small cooler that's gonna go on the front of there, that will be enclosed in, so you, so it'll look like the regular part of the building. So, it's not gonna be just an old silver cooler sticking out in front of the building. We've made the angle on that new addition to stay in line with the existing building that's there, so that it doesn't come out. That's why you see that little angle piece on the front corner there. I really don't have anything else to say. They, they are trying to get in compliance of the 40%, which is where they need to be, and it is for a convenience store only.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You're probably not authorized to answer this question. What they have is a conditional use permit.
Correct.
What they are is a liquor store, okay?
Correct.
They can sell 100%, 100% everything they sell could be liquor, right now, it'd be permitted.
Correct.
Okay. Are you telling us, are you appearing here and saying, "We want to give up our conditional use permit, we just want a beer and wine permit for a convenience store?"
I met with them at 11:30 this morning, and they are stressing to me that they want to move towards, more towards a convenience store than a liquor store.
Now, that doesn't answer the question, of course.
I'm answering it to the best of my ability.
Yeah, what's, what's before us is, you want to double the size of a liquor store. That's what's before us.
No.
No, that's.
That's what you're looking at, yes.
Yeah, we don't have a, we can't make that differentiation on goods versus liquor. What's before us is expansion of a liquor store.
I, yes, that's exactly what you're looking at, yes.
Yeah, okay.
For the proposal of a convenience store.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one quick one. On the site plan where it shows the proposed layout, could someone put that back up there again, please? Okay, you mentioned that you're not gonna sell any more than you've got now, but yet, it looks like we're gonna have twice the amount of cooler space or more, so what's gonna go in these coolers?
The front cooler area is gonna be for dairy products.
But I see milk cooler over here on the left, and ice cream over on the left. Those are dairy products.
I'm not sure why those are over there, because they can't be in an outside cooler like that, anyway.
And if you have that much cooler space for dairy products, won't you be getting close to the size of AE up there on Hubble? It's a bad joke, sorry.
Okay. I was gonna ask for confirmation of that one.
I'm just a little confused, when I see cooler next to other cooler, and the other cooler's not labeled liquor, that's already there, and I'm assuming that's what's gonna be in it, this looks not only in principle as the expansion of a liquor store, it looks like we're proposing to have more stuff in the cooler for alcohol.
Yes. I am telling you what I'm being told, that it is not.
Okay, and, and I'm sure you're trying hard as the contractor, but I'm missing part of the story because the person that wants to do this is not here, and that, I, that kind of leaves me hanging. Because like Tom said, there's probably some questions you can't answer here.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? And I bet we have some last questions for staff. Yes, Sue.
Or comments, anyway.
Ms. Donovan, zoning enforcement officer. I'm not entirely sure the applicant understands, but I think maybe the board sort of understands. They have a conditional use permit to be a liquor store. They don't have to have any 60-40 at all, right now. Even if they gave up their conditional use permit and said, "We don't want to be a liquor store, we want to come in as a limited food sale," they still have to have separations. So, I'm not sure that they're gaining what they want to gain by making the argument that they're moving toward a limited retail food establishment. In our, in my opinion, it is an expansion of a liquor store, and it does not meet the separations. He can say he's putting milk in there, and 27 minutes later, it's full of beer, so, we have to look at it as what it could be used for in the future, and it is an expansion of a liquor store.
Let me ask you, Roger, if, if the owner came in and said, "I'm surrendering my conditional use permit, and I'm applying for a beer and wine license," you know, and I'll agree that I, you know, have to meet the 40% requirement, that I, that I can't sell more than the 40% beer and wine, all the rest of it's gotta be food. That would be a different matter before us, wouldn't it?
It would be a different matter before you, but you would still have the separation issues for this conversion to a different use. It would be a different matter, but some of the same standards would be applicable to it.
Would that still mean that they would have to apply essentially as a new business, and meet the separation requirements, or they could continue on the business, downgrade to a convenience store?
See, if they're self-limiting, I mean, if they, they agree to a limitation on their power to sell liquor, do we have the authority, then, to put in effect that limitation and grant them their variances if we felt that that was a good idea?
But, why couldn't he do that right now? Why couldn't he just get rid of some of his liquor?
Because he's still got the same problem. If he's selling any beer or wine.
But, and he could do that, he could just take out half of what he's got and put in groceries. If he wants to be a grocery store owner, let him take out some of his beer and wine, and.
Yeah, but we're talking about what we're authorizing him to do on the premises in relation to the spatial relations to the church, and the park, and the daycare centers.
But he could do that now. He could just take out half of his beer and wine and liquor, and put in a grocery store, and he's.
Yeah, but, but he still has the same problem. He has to double the size of the, of the building.
Yeah, but if he doesn't, if he doesn't double the size, if he just keeps the size.
He can do what he wishes right now.
Yeah.
He doesn't need to be here.
Yeah. If he wants to be a grocery store owner so bad, that's what he could do.
Well, yeah, but.
I bet you the Catholic charity would sell the old Quick Trip to him, make it open in there.
I guess, in response to the question you've asked, if I could maybe state it a little differently, if they, if they would say that if allowed to expand, they would limit their, their sales of alcohol to the 40% that would be applicable to a convenience store, that could be a limitation that you would impose on their use as a liquor store.
Yes.
So, that could be, that could be a limitation imposed on what's in front of you now, if the applicant were to agree to that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think his representative has the authority to agree to that.
Follow-up question, would that eliminate the separation requirements that are currently in force?
No, I mean, the board would still have to address.
Address the limitations of the separation.
So, basically, it would be to grant him what he wants with the, with the extra limitation that Mr. Clark is identifying. That, that would be an option for the board, I'm not advocating it, but it would be a possibility.
I don't think he has the authority to, to tell us if he wants to do that.
I don't think so, either.
Does anybody want to continue this thing? Listen to the owner?
We didn't continue the one last month when the owner wasn't here. We voted on it.
No.
Let me ask this question, then, Roger. Let's say we deny this. They can continue to operate as a liquor store. Nothing's changed.
Nothing I want.
Right.
In the present configuration.
If he comes with an amended appeal, could he, he could do that within a year's time. Amended appeal would be, he wants to change to a convenience store?
You have to look at Roger, I'm not answering that question.
I was looking for some backup, too. If we deny it, and he wants to come back and this time say, "Look, I want to change to a convenience store," and expand.
Yep.
Would that be something that would qualify as a brand-new application that he could come back within a year?
Can I approach?
Uh, no, not right now.
Yes, Andrew, but I don't think there was anybody speaking.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, he could have come back and applied. Depending on the nature of his application, we might be asking the board to make the, to make the determination is, is he showing a change of circumstances, a different application or changed circumstances to allow it? And so, that might be like the first issue, that would be the first issue before you is.
What's the change?
What's, what's the change? It may be so obvious that the staff would, would just, would just say, "Yeah, it's a changed application, we're gonna accept it and send it to the board." It may be if, you know, depending on the circumstances, that the staff would say, "Well, we're not really sure here, or we don't agree with it, that there is changed circumstances," so that would be like the first, that would be the first DA item, and I think you've had those before in the past, is, has there been sufficiently changed circumstances to warrant a reconsideration of it? And then, you decide that first before you go to the merits. With that kind of disclaimer, there's a potential that he could come back anytime.
Okay, all right. That, that answers me. Do you have some substantially new information you want to give, or you just? But I don't want, we normally don't open it up once you've already had your piece.
I do, because we did talk about this this morning. And what he's saying, that he can get within that 40 to 60 split in a year's time, I can go back to him and say, "Hey, you know, you're not gonna get it unless you agree to get within that number, you have to, your accountant has to prove those numbers, or you lose your whole permit."
Well, I think the thing that's before us, I mean, does anybody have anything more for staff? Let's bring it back in here, the.
One more question.
Go ahead, yes.
I think the last time we saw something like this, we had adjacency of other purveyors of other liquor stores. Did any, does that apply here? Are there any?
Yeah, there's a quarter-mile separation requirement, which they do meet. There aren't any other Class E liquor licenses within a quarter-mile.
And related to that, Bert, taverns by themselves aren't, aren't in that, because there's the, what, the railroad tavern, or whatever it's called, or the.
On the tracks.
Stuck at the track?
Yeah. There's also the Liberty Tavern one, whatever that's called. There's also the Liberty Tavern one, whatever that's called. I can't say I've been to either of them, but...
The travels line.
It's your relatives that are drinkers.
Yeah, all right. But taverns are not in the radius for consideration.
Okay, if we're done with staff, let's bring it back here. I see this as going one of two ways. One, we can go ahead and continue it for a month so we can at least get the owner back here so we can get, maybe get some concessions. Or we can deny it and have him come back as another request. So if that sounds like a couple of reasonable things we could look at...
I don't have a question.
Want us to hold off? This might work out.
Well, can we still have a little discussion?
Sure.
Our case last month, every case is different, but if that guy we had up on East 38th and Hubble had wanted to expand, I would have said no. There's a difference to me between a liquor store existing in a neighborhood and one wanting to expand.
Do you have a question? Expect a continuance?
Okay.
All right, that makes it a lot easier for us.
Yeah.
I need you up here to get it for the recording.
On recommendations on things that we need to get clarified, we're going to ask for a continuance until next month.
That'd be December 19th, so it's about three weeks. So that'll make it work for you?
Yes. If he wants it, it will.
I like your approach.
Okay.
Tom, you got any?
With the consent of the owner or the applicant, I move that we continue this matter to the next regularly scheduled meeting on December 19th.
I'll second that.
They moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed, motion carries five to one. I like your thought though, Linda. Item 21, I think we've got a crowd here for this one, so glad we can get on it. This is a variance at 2105 52nd Street. We have some communications on that as well, folks.
Yeah, I passed the cards around. This subject property, not too far south of Hickman Road. Can you see the golden outline there? It's in a, definitely in a mixed neighborhood with, for many, many years, this was R2 until the mid-'90s when it was rezoned. So there's a number of duplexes that are scattered throughout the area. Most of the dwellings are small, whether they're duplexes or single-family. What's being proposed is a second driveway, which puts them over the percentage of the front yard area limitation. The fact that it's a second driveway also throws it out of the provision where a driveway to a three or four-car garage could actually exceed the 25%. But this is a second driveway in addition to one that goes to the garage that exists on the property, so it doesn't get that allowance. So everything is counted in terms of the percentage. So the percentage you see in the appeal there is the 30, was it 38.7%? 38.5, I'm sorry. So what they're doing tips of scales. Now, they're pretty much limiting this to a pad in the front yard area. It doesn't go anywhere else beyond the property, beyond the front of the property. So it will just be this area being parked out in front of the house. Looks like from the drop curve, the neighboring property may have had an approach there in a driveway next to this property at one time. Sometimes these subdivisions just created drops for every parcel, whether they actually developed a driveway there or not. That was, in fact, if you go even further, I think there's, it might even show that there's just roll curb starting at a certain point west, I'm sorry, north of here. Yeah, there you go. So the curbing type even changed from, there's the curb, and then it goes to a more what we call roll curb, which we don't even allow as a standard for the urban standard. So here, that's a picture of the current situation. They've actually, it's too thick and it's going to... Doesn't want to settle. Can you take it off the bottom? So right now, if you would have driven by the property, you would have seen that they're anticipating this being approved hopefully from their standpoint. But the contractor was told then when they came in for the permit that they had to get this relief. This is the amount of area between the dwelling to the north and the subject block, so you really can't realistically get another driveway to the back without doing a shared driveway. This is a diagram that the applicant drew, I believe, to show what's being planned. So they would essentially get one space here, east of the sidewalk.
So hang on a second, Eric. While they drew a diagram to show you what they want to do, they already started doing it anyway?
Well, this is the diagram, yeah, this is the diagram that they supplied. This is the picture that our staff person took.
So, okay. I'll just let that one go.
At least a match.
It looks like there was a recent sidewalk were done too, because if you can see the along the sidewalk, there's, I don't know if they did service.
And a new tree or...
Yeah, services, maybe a service connection too.
Okay.
You can ask the owner that easier. Just in general, we, unless there's a dire need to have this, I mean, they have adequate parking, but it sounds like maybe the two tenants don't really, aren't that into sharing the driveway possibly. So the problem that's being expressed by the appellant is that there's just not enough parking to get them off the street, especially when the snow ordinance is in effect, when they need to at certain points in the wintertime. But this, if you go around to the back, one tenant is, the argument is that one tenant is possibly disturbing the peace of the other, the units split this way. So both tenants are passing one of the units to get access to the back parking.
What is in the back? Do you have a picture of the back?
I don't think I have a picture, but I thought I had that in the aerial.
You had it in the aerial.
Where you could see the...
At least one comment card said there was a garage back.
Yeah, so that driveway goes around and then does a 90-degree into the garage there.
Is that a single-car garage or a double garage?
I'm assuming it's a single.
But one of the notes here said it was a double car. Somewhere I read that.
I'll let the applicant...
It's a two-car garage at the rear then, is that what?
I think in your own staff report, it discusses a two-car garage.
Somewhere.
You can see it, I don't know if it's easy to tell whether, the applicant can certainly answer that question.
So there's parking, at least in the garage, parking appears to be in the back.
We would allow parking anywhere along the driveway here.
And the argument that, for the other one, is to get it off for snow plows?
Well, one of the arguments made is that during snow ordinance periods, they can't park on the street, so they do have to get their vehicles off the street. We think they have the capacity to do that. It's not convenient to tandem a ton of cars in one driveway, but it's still doable, so it's not an impossibility. But if we start aggregately allowing people to, you know, use up a lot of their front yard for parking, it starts to become a detriment to the neighborhood. So that's why we have the standard.
But so far as you know, this was, this duplex was built and constructed in just this way to provide parking in the rear for the tenants in the garage and with one driveway?
Yeah, they would have met, duplexes are allowed to have tandem parking and they only require one space per unit outside the front yard area. So they certainly have tandem distance for enough vehicles to meet that requirement. So when it was built, it probably met all the requirements we would have required. Whether that was practical from, you know, keeping them out of each other's way out of that.
Page 61.
At the time this was built, it says that it was built on a 5,209 square-foot lot. Now they'd have to have, what, 7,500 square feet?
They'd have to have 10,000, I think.
10,000 square feet for a duplex?
8,500, I'm sorry, in a...
8,500?
In an R2 district. They'd have to be in R2 district and then they'd have to have, I think, 8,500 square feet.
Okay.
But yeah, in the old standards, they would have been allowed on smaller properties that were single-family dwellings.
All right, okay. Okay, thank you.
So 10,000 for a new duplex in R2. R1 doesn't allow new duplexes.
So this is built on what is basically a half lot, right, as we'd consider it right now?
Yes, it's already pretty tight.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Eric.
There was about 50, the response scattered about evenly as well.
One quick comment. Eric, there's, besides the front yard setback issues, no parking in the front yard. If the paving was allowed, wouldn't that mess up the amount of open space required to be in a front yard?
That's what's being appealed, is the open space.
It's the open space, it's not just the parking.
Parking can be in the front yard, not the required parking.
Okay, so it does come down to the open space requirement, not just parking in a front yard.
Right, so surplus parking can be in the front yard area for one and two-family dwellings. It can't exceed 25% of the area.
Right. It has to be on a driveway though, you just can't park in the yard.
You can't park on the grass, right.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Eric. Applicant, representative applicant?
Hi, I'm Terry Stark. I'm the current owner of the property, purchase under contract. Norm and Beverly Barnes are the title, deed holders.
His address?
I would say thank you.
His address?
Oh, I need your address then too.
I'm, I'm sorry, my home address is 7506 Urbandale Avenue, excuse me, Oakwood Drive in Urbandale.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for hearing. If I'd have known the process, I probably would have said to the tenant, "It's a bridge too far." Now I'm in belly button deep, the contractor proceeds without talking to me, so he digs out a driveway and says, "You need to go down and get a variance." I'm going, "What?" So I'll answer your question there. Well, I now have another problem to solve if this doesn't get approved. But what the tenants have brought to me is, is this a little drawing of the...
Yeah, you can just put...
Okay. If you, this is technically a two-car garage that's very small. To try to get a car backed out of here, back around and get out, it's an impossibility. You have to back out and back out the driveway. The issue the tenants both face is, I rented this side to a gentleman who uses that garage and has a vehicle. If you hit the snow thing, which is a whole issue, somebody's got to get in the middle of the night or say, "I don't want to move my car, it's my driveway." So that's a whole issue. So I was trying to be accommodating and say, "Well," and it's expensive. I mean, I'm just doing this to be good and kind and try to help them get along better. That would provide at least room for one car to get off the street. I don't think, he probably would park there all the time. It's irregardless what he would do. I like more grass and less grass, I'm arguing for that. But I didn't realize there were restrictions as they were before we started. So I've noticed something on that street that's problematic. I honestly can't tell you if that's a garage. I just don't remember seeing. There's always a pickup truck parked sideways right here. So I'm suspicioning it's not a garage anymore. So they don't have any off-street parking for their duplex here either. He was one of the people concerned about certain strange runoff. I don't think that what's happening here, if it was a driver, it wasn't, plays any part in that. But I've noticed on the weekends in particular, when I go by to check the property, that although there's only five duplexes and 30, somebody else is nice enough to count it up, 30-some single families, that entire street only allows, I believe, one-way parking on this side and it's just wall-to-wall cars. So I can't imagine, I don't have to deal with it when it snows, but I understand my own tenants saying, "Can you get some relief? Could you help us?" And I'm saying, "Well, if I can, I will." But it's a big, big problem. The only place they can park is Clearon down, down here to Franklin Court, and that just got less and less because now they're building an elderly or citizens. So I imagine that's really jam-full of cars when people see a storm coming and they know they have to get off the street. So I don't know. I'm just here to do what's right and fair and I didn't realize that, I've probably got people here that are very upset I'm even thinking about doing it, but I want them, I want them to know the intent. I mean, if they were my tenant and they asked me to do the same thing, I didn't knowingly go forward with something before I had permission. I just told the concrete guy, "Hey, I want to do it. Be sure you call for permits before you do it."
Sure.
Happened to be an inspector down the street who came up and says, "Hey, you better go check and make sure that's allowed."
Right.
And then I get the phone call. So that you know the sequence of events.
We found out painfully.
Well, whatever. But I do think it's a reasonable thing for tenants to ask me to do it. I think it's something, if you drive down the street, even if it were paved, you wouldn't know it was there. And the only time you'd know is if somebody parked a car. You'd see it sitting there, but it's just a lot handy to park cars in the street when there's not a weather problem. That's probably what'll happen. But regardless, that's probably as much as I can describe or share.
Sure.
So that's motivation behind it.
I just have one question and this is more maybe a statement, but the whole snow ordinance issue that's coming about, and I see that that's being mentioned, I just want to emphasize, I mean, is there any way that you could go to your tenants? It's really only going to be a very short amount of time that we have to keep our cars off the street.
Can I tell you the reality of that? That sounds good in rhetoric, but the reality is, these tenants, two single guys get along pretty good, but I know for a fact, one of them works all day and one of them works all night. So what's the one guy do that just got to sleep and his car's parked in the driveway and the other guy's car is buried? It's hard enough to write a lease that says you both have to cooperate and mow the grass with the mower I gave you and blow the snow with the snow blower I gave you to try to mitigate those arguments.
I was curious about that. I was curious how you do that.
You know, it's really hard, yeah.
But I'm just saying, with the snow ordinance, you know, people are making a big thing about the snow ordinance.
It's big.
But it's only going to be, you know...
Two inches of snow and you get towed if you don't move your car. I'm a facilities manager at First Federated Church, I'm a pastor there, and we've got a street adjoining 48th and the others, and we get tickets, knowing inside it's starting to snow and don't watch what we're doing, all of a sudden tickets on the windshield because since we came in and went in our offices, it snowed three, four inches.
The city's going to notify everybody and it's only after the snow is over with and you're going to know when they're coming down your street and that person just needs to go put it in the driveway for, you know, 10 minutes while they're...
But you've got to come home from your job and put it in the driveway for 10 minutes. That's all I'm arguing.
Well, okay.
He doesn't drive to work?
I'm saying they both drive to work, but if that happens when they're already at work and they say, "Well, it stops snowing, it's the middle of the day into your office" and they, they don't know that notice has been waived, I would say it's just awkward, it's more awkward than you know.
I think as a landlord, then that's probably something you're going to have to deal with.
Well, I'm sure everybody in the street deals with the same thing, but I was willing, unlike maybe many of them, willing to, it's a very expensive thing to do. It's 2,500 bucks. You can do your own math. I'm giving, I'm going to give up four months' worth of rent to try to accommodate them. So that's the only reason, and I spent four hours today and 385 bucks for a permit, so I'm working very hard on someone else's behalf who's not going to do a thing to compensate me for this grievance. I'm just, I'm just saying, if I can do something that in the long haul will help them with a problem that won't go away, we had 14 major snows in the years we've had them, that's a lot of snow and it's a real deal for the tenants, so I don't know.
I'll tell you, I've been married 36 years and, you know, we get our cars off the driveway and God forbid if my car is behind my wife's, yeah, I would rather have two guys arguing than my wife bending my ear, tearing me, get my clothes on, get my butt out there and get that car moved because I'm not going to do it.
You're a slow learner. That's what you're telling us.
No, I'm a great sleeper. So I mean, just my own personal objections, I'd see to that.
Is the main reason you're wanting to do this because of this snow ordinance? Is that really what this...
It's the primer, because just like everybody else, there's enough lineal footage on 52nd, on the weekends, it's bumper-to-bunker cars.
But if this ordinance wasn't passed and we weren't going to be looking at doing this, would you have decided to do this?
If there weren't a snow ordinance, yeah, I wouldn't be messing with it.
You'd tell them, "Hey, we'll just work it out." Well, how does that work the other...
No, no, I mean, they'd have to, they'd leave the car sit there. If there wasn't a snow ordinance, they'd just leave the car sit there and the plows go around it.
Okay.
But you can't do that. You've got to move the car.
Okay.
Therein lies... Therein lies the problem, and everybody, so there's upwards, I'm going to guess, there's upwards of thirty, forty people that get in whatever hour of the day or night, and they've got to go out there and they see that snow stop, and they've got to get that car moved because they know...
So, how do you clear out the driveway at this place? Do they have to do that themselves?
I give them a two-stage, the guy on the south side, I give him a two-stage snow blower.
So, somehow they must figure out how to move cars around then, so they can...
No, no. I'm saying, it's a one-tenant, the only one that uses it. It's just the south tenant that uses the driveway.
Okay.
Him getting himself to blow it out is a...
So, I hope the other guy gets a lot cheaper rent since he doesn't get to use a driveway or a garage.
Well, the other guy pays a premium to get the garage.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, sure.
Well, maybe that's just the way it is. Okay.
Yeah, we do have to get out of here, folks.
Yeah, okay.
There's no more questions? Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition?
Chairman Gray, members of the board, Jason Polium, twenty-one thirteen Fifty-Second Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Gentlemen certainly done a good job managing the property here in recent years. It's cleaned up, it's managed much better than it used to be. I would object to the, to the notion that the driveway can't be used by two people. The issue at this point is that one car is always blocking the driveway, as is a trailer always blocking the driveway. If that's addressed, both people should be able to get around the backside, and I realize that the communication could be difficult there, but to me, it seems much more practical than paving another stall that would take up almost forty percent of the green space in the front yard. And let's bear in mind, there isn't much green space at this particular property as it stands. So, there's the aesthetic issue of removing the limited green space that is there currently or was there, and there's also the stormwater issue. We already have runoff problems in the neighborhood. We have water that ponds along the curbs. This is going to create another impervious surface. It's, it's going to contribute to the problem. It might not be a major contribution, but at this point, every little bit matters. I respectfully request that you deny the variance, and I would also ask that you work with the property owner to restore the turf in the front yard and also control runoff when that is done, because it slopes, and if there isn't erosion control, it's going to be a muddy mess on that sidewalk. Thanks.
Any questions?
Yeah. Jason, just, just a brief question for you here. In living in this neighborhood, the appellant mentioned that the street always has cars on, especially on the weekends. Do you agree with that? And if so, do you also think the street has the capacity to handle the car for the tenant if it is parked on the street on a normal basis?
I would disagree with the bumper-to-bumper characterization. I think that's a bit of an overgeneralization. There are quite a few cars parked there at times, but it's, but it's not bumper-to-bumper from Hickman all the way to Franklin. I think that's an overgeneralization. And again, part of the reason that we do have a lot of cars parked on the street is because the duplexes along the street, they just, they don't use the driveway effectively. As I mentioned, in this particular property, two-car garage in the backyard, but it's not accessible to both tenants because one tenant is always blocking the driveway. There's a trailer there, there's a boat there, if that's...
Is that because two vehicles could not pass normally, or he just crowds it and sits in the middle of the driveway?
He parks on the side of the, the south unit and just blocks the driveway. That's, that to me is the issue.
Okay. All right. So, so two cars could not normally pass on the driveway? If he would move to the back further, the one could get around, is what you're saying?
Pull all the way around to the back, then both people could use the driveway.
Okay.
I realize the, that might not be the most practical thing in the world due to communication issues, but at the same time, it's also not impractical or unreasonable. To me, putting the stall in the front yard is a solution in search of a problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? You have three minutes for closing arguments or rebuttals? Yeah?
Just, excuse me, I wanted to get here. A couple points of clarification. I think we pointed out, you couldn't take a subcompact car and pull it clear in here and get another car out of the garage. It's impossible. I didn't design this, but it's, it's not a passable situation. The garage is so small, one person would for sure have to stay in the garage, the other would have to back completely out the driveway. I can't figure as to why people did what they did, but that's the reason this tenant doesn't choose to take a large pickup truck down there, dead in it. He's a contractor, says a little trailer and parks here. The other is, I'm wondering if, if instead of this being a hard service, now you and I talked, and you don't like rock.
No.
At the same time, rock is a landscape architecturally-approved material, just like grass is. It's a compromise. Could something be done here that is, and that's good for a drainage, it would absorb water better than grass or equally as good? Landscape ties could be put along the side if they wanted a few bushes here, that's perfectly fine, but at least if someone needed to get off the street, there's a way, something that isn't grass, where a car could be parked here. I'm just, I'm asking for possibilities. I'm not going to die on this hill, but...
But you're going to say, "Why all the cars in the street?"
Yeah.
Every other duplex owner fights the same problem. So, you get the tenants to get along, it's a good argument, but you can tell that he even knows that that doesn't work.
Let me ask you something, and looking at the width that you were proposing to, to do this, and the width between your, the back of the duplex and the garage?
Uh-huh.
No, no, no. Back of the garage, in between the two.
Oh, in here?
No, no, no.
Between the garage and the duplex?
Yeah. No, follow twenty-one oh-five and...
Right in here?
No, no, no.
East side of twenty-one oh-five.
Where the number five is, just to the right, yeah.
Right in here, there. Put a slab there.
Why don't you pave a spot in there?
Well, the trouble is, you still, if I could, if I had this drawn to scale, you just cannot back a car...
It is drawn to scale.
This way and get out. It will not work.
Then how do...
You couldn't even get a car turned and up behind the back of the house. I wish it were to scale, but...
So, how do people get out of the garage? You have to back all the way out to the street?
All the way out. That's right. I didn't design this, absolutely, but it is a, it's a fiasco. I wish, this is a duplex. I kind of wish I owned it because I'd then take this driveway up here and I'd widen it out, and I'd let them both, I don't know, these guys have got a two-car garage here and a one-car, or one-stall paving. I don't know how they get in and out of here. They face the same problem.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just saying, if there's a way to do something, I'm here one time, I'm sure I'm not going to do this again.
Okay.
If there's a way to do something here that, say, is retaining wall, river ties and, and I don't care whether it's river rock or crushed stone or something, redstone, I don't care what it is, if we made something that absorbed water, which I'd agree, I'd rather have that than I would paving personally.
Right.
It's not going to cost me any money to do it that way. It's a thought.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any last questions for staff? Here in nine, we'll close the public portion, go to a board decision.
Well, after, after looking at some of the comment cards, especially the neighborhood, the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association does not support this. I think the applicant is trying to make this work, but I'm, I'm not willing to kind of give up the ship for snow that we may or may not have. My neighborhood participated in the snow ordinance program last year, and it never kicked in at all, because we never got enough snow that they had to come plow the street. Yes, in 2010, you know, we had four foot of accumulated snow. But if you look up and down this street, I don't see anything else like this. When you listen to a guy who's a homeowner that lives in the neighborhood, two doors down, who's here, that carries as much weight as me as a tenant that can't get along, and perhaps this has gone on for sixty years like this. I have no idea, but I'm, I'm not a fan of putting dead-end spots in our front yards in what I would call a stable, but a neighborhood that you've got to keep an eye on. This is a stable neighborhood, but if it slides further backwards, we're in trouble.
Well, if you take a look at this too, Mel, the criteria for a variance, because that's what we're, we would be granting as a variance.
It's not just an exception, it's a harder hill to climb.
And I can't see any of the three that they even qualify for. This, this is probably the three criteria that fail on everyone and are grounds for denial, so. I mean, it's, it's, you know, I feel his pain and everything, but, you know, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances and not of the owner's own making. That place has been there like that, and because the tenants are arguing, I mean, that does not tip the tide to me. And the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return? Boy, I bet he could sell it and make some money on it, so. I mean, those are the kind of things that I look at and say, "This one just doesn't make sense."
And again, it's, this, this isn't anything against the appellant here.
No, no. I think everybody appreciates that, but...
Right. But I just, I, I want to make sure we keep our neighborhoods pointed in the right direction, and, and having dead-end parking in the front yards, I, if this is really about the snow thing, I doubt whether the city's going to come issue someone a ticket if they drive up into their front yard and hang out for six hours until the street gets plowed. Now, that might tear up your yard, I don't know, but we had a city councilman that wanted to propose an option to allow people to park in their front yards until snow is cleared. I don't know if I would support that as an ordinance, but if, if it happens six times a year, I doubt whether anybody'd say anything until the street's cleared.
I think we're pretty close. We've got to get moving, folks.
Okay, yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move staff recommendations.
And I'll second.
Then moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Got to go to Plan B, sorry. And last but not least, we thank you, folks, for sticking around. Item twenty-two is a use variance at forty-five forty Lower Beaver Road.
I'll try to keep this brief since I know a couple of members have to leave shortly.
Yes.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I need to hop on a call now.
Go right ahead.
If I go in the back and do that, if you need me, grab me.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Jake. I've got to make a phone call.
Just tell them to keep the stove warm. I'm sure it's more important than that.
The request is for a use variance that would allow retention of a general motor vehicle repair business. This business has been before the board two previous times, once in nineteen, or I'm sorry, 2005. They've received a use variance for two years, and then again in 2007, they came to the board and were granted a use variance for a five-year period. District B is that the original use variance from 2005, the C is the use variance from 2007. At that time, there were twelve conditions. They complied with most of these throughout the year. There is one here that outdoor storage, it says, "Outdoor display of automotive accessories in storage of materials or equipment such as barrels, tires, and tools is prohibited." As you can see from aerial photos, they have had some outdoor storage of tires over the years, so they've been in violation of that. However, as you can see from the packet of...
Do you have a date on this?
This aerial was from April of 2012.
Okay.
You can see from the packet of emails, he's a popular guy, the neighbors all seem to appreciate him. I just, for your information, here's a 2006 aerial that shows, that was before the tire or the enclosure was constructed here. I believe the enclosure originally constructed for storing the dumpsters and the trash containers. They have, do have an approved site plan filed with the city. The landscaping seems to all be in place around the perimeter. It's hard to tell now, this time of the year, whether that landscaping is all living, but the inspector did go out and take a look at it last week and seems to think the landscaping is all there in conformance with the site plan. Here is a site photo. Oh, sorry, it's not... This photo just shows the existing building. You can see the wood fence. From the street, you would never know. There's a big pile of tires behind the enclosure. Here's the building that fenced an area that stores the tires, and you can see the trees and shrubs. This is looking from the other direction at the building, the fenced-in areas on that side. They do have a solid six-foot tall fence on the north and west sides to screen it from the adjoining multiple family residential uses. This is another photo that shows that area used for tires, storing tires. And then the consent map, we just had one property within two-hundred-and-fifty feet submit their comment card and support, but we did, I did get a slew of emails, so. In light of their violation of that condition that they have no outside storage, staff did take the, I guess, the heavy-handed approach, and we recommended denial, but we do have an alternative staff recommendation for you to consider.
You're on top of your game.
Yeah, I did just give this to the applicant a few minutes ago, so he hasn't had a whole lot of time to look over it, but most of these conditions are ones that were previously applied to the 2007 approval. The first is, we recommended that it just be extended for another five years. Our applicant might argue that it's kind of cumbersome or annoying to come back every five years for this review, so he might ask for that to be extended. The second, the applicant shall submit a self, shall submit a certification from a landscaped architect or certified nurseryman by next May that all the landscaping on the site has been installed in accordance with the site plan.
Bert, let me ask you a question. In the five years that he's had this use variance, have you, has the city received any complaints by anybody about the landscaping or about the outside storage of materials? Anybody?
I've gotten some calls, never, I don't think anything's ever been founded, but there have been a neighbor or two that's kept an eye on it, but...
But nothing in writing, not for five years?
Right.
So, why do you want him to do anything except what he's been doing for the last five years, since the neighbors seem to be happy with what he's been doing for the last five years?
I guess considering it is owned R-four, which is residential classification, we want to ensure that it continues to have few impacts on the surrounding property, so again, that's just our recommendation. If the board feels that is unreasonable, you're welcome to actually choose. And then the third condition, we've said, "Any outdoor storage of materials such as barrels, tires, and tools is prohibited. All existing storage shall be removed by December thirty-first." All existing storage shall be removed by December 31st. And again, that was for that screened area that contains all of the old tires.
But aren't those just in transit? I mean, those are not the same tires that were there five years ago.
Hard to prove. Two on the bottom of the pile, maybe.
This is crazy. Welcome to dig, huh?
Other than that, the other conditions are just basic that have been in place for the past five years.
Okay. Now, Bert, if we should strike Condition 1, they still are under zoning enforcement for all of this stuff.
Right. And that would be, Condition 12 would give the zoning officer the right to bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Because it's still, even though it's a used variance, almost kind of like a conditional use permit, if they're not complying with the standards, it can be brought back and we could revoke that used variance, right? Okay.
Any other questions?
I just point out that since this is a used variance, the decision of the board does get forwarded to the city council.
Okay. And let me ask you one more. This is kind of more technical question than anything else. If he removed all the existing outdoor storage by December 31st and then started using it again, that would not technically be a violation of this order.
Well, it says outside storage is prohibited, then...
Yeah, but if it's not storage, I mean, if he's, if it's in transit, I mean, it's there until he gets a, until he gets a truck home.
Now he's getting into my DNR territory on managing what's a solid waste and what's not. I can help you with that one real quick.
Any other questions? We've got to move on, folks. Thanks, Bert. Swann, did you want to add something to that?
Chair members of the boards, and Donovan, zoning enforcement officer, I don't care if it's in transit or what it is, it shouldn't be stored outside. This is an R district where he's doing an M district outside storage in an R district. The reason, he just can't do it. He needs to store them inside or get rid of them, but you shouldn't have outside storage, especially in an R district, under a special condition granted by the board.
Right.
Thank you. Applicant, representative of the applicant?
Chairman Gray, member of the boards, thank you for this chance to speak. My name's Greg Robinson. My address is 21045 490th Street in Oakland, Iowa. Back in, I think it was 2006, we drastically upgraded this property. As you could probably tell from the pictures there, I spent over $25,000 on the property, which is about probably a third of what the property was worth at that time. It was inspected heavily at that time by your office, and we did everything we could do to comply. At that time, we had many compliments from the neighborhood. The neighbors are very supportive of Jerry. I mean, let's face it, this is a small business. He makes his living off of the people that live a mile in each direction. He doesn't pull from, you know, it's not a high-traffic area or anything like that. So he is supported by the neighborhood. Over the years, I've always replaced trees and shrubs that die. There's kind of a clay consistency to the soil. The trees don't, well, last year I replaced five trees. So they do, do, they do die, but I have stayed on it. And as he indicated, people were out there and said that the trees were, and shrubs seemed to all be there. They don't look as well right now, but of course, what trees do. The prior findings that they put in here, and you've got in your notes from 2005, are still pertinent, a hardship of the present because the design and layout of the existing building is suited as a service station and has a remaining economic life of approximately 10 years. Well, we took care of it, we upgraded it, spent a lot of money on it, and it said it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and, you know, I think it fits in well with the neighborhood. The sad commentary on it, and it's sad because I own the building, is it's surrounded on two sides by huge apartment complex and one side by a convenience store, and nobody's ever going to build a duplex there or a fourplex or a single-family home, it's just not ever going to happen. So, you know, if he's out of business, then I'm out of business. So, as far as the thing in here that says we didn't have a permit for that enclosure, this is the first I've heard of that. I think, Mr. Brown, I think you were the county attorney, city attorney back then, and I think Jerry had a, I know I had conversations with you. I lived out of state at that time, and we had a tire rack that you put tires on, and Jerry at least remembers you telling him, you can't have that rack out, put it back in the enclosure. Well, so I think you were aware of the enclosure. I figured we got a permit with that when we permitted the fence, but I guess I'm wrong. So like I say, I didn't live back here, and, you know, I'm sorry about that. We'd be happy to buy a permit for the fence. Tires, the only tires in there right now are four tires that Jerry took off his pickup and pending taking them home, he put his winter tires on. There's a stack of four tires in there. That's the only thing that's in that enclosure right now. And I didn't get this notice till Monday and called him, so it isn't like he hurried up and got everything out of there before I got to town. I don't think, I'm sorry, I interrupted. You had a question?
No, what I was going to say is that you can't have any outdoor storage. That's what they're saying. Whether it's four tires, one tire, that's what they're getting to.
Well, the purpose of that enclosure was because, one of the stipulations back then was that the dumpster had to go in, and, you know, the existing enclosure that was there is about the size of this little area here. It was for back when you had trash cans and a dumpster wouldn't fit in there, and if it did, the truck couldn't lift it up because the wires, the higher wires are closer than the ceiling is. So it had, it had to jut out from the building, and I remember having that conversation with your office back then because that was the reason that we had to build it. I don't know why you let us build it without a permit, but I guess you did. But anyway, the first that I'd ever heard that that was not permitted was when I got this letter the other day.
So I'm trying to keep this expedited.
Right, right.
You're going to do a way and you're going to make sure that they do not...
Nothing will be, can the dumpster stay in there? Because otherwise, the dumpster's got to be out.
Yeah, I think the dumpster's...
But nothing else...
That's enclosed, see?
How, okay, see, let me read through again. Barrels, tires, and tools, you know, he has a mower, a mower business, you know, he repairs mowers and snow blowers, you know, those can't be in there pending repair or anything like that.
No.
Because that's not a barrel...
They got to be in the building.
That's not a barrel, tire or...
Material or...
I guess we thought this outside storage of materials, somewhere in one of these, it said "display," and hence the tire rack that he's, at least indicates that you told him to put back in the enclosure because it was a display tire rack, and he said, "Can't display them," so, you know, he figured, well, you can't display them, but if I put them back behind this six-foot fence, that's not display.
I think that's number six, outdoor display of automobile accessories.
Okay, okay.
Is prohibited, yeah.
All right. No, in this, the decision in order from before, it says, number three says, "Outdoor display of automobile accessories and storage of materials or equipment such as barrels, tires, and tools is prohibited." Well, anyway, it still says tires, but anyway, I was given this just a few minutes ago, and if we comply with that, I would ask that number two, you know, we bent over backwards to replace and keep up the, you know, a nurseryman back then was like 300 bucks, it's probably 600 bucks now. I'd ask you to forego that as long as, I'm sure you guys will continue to inspect it, and we will replace, you know, trees are going to die. All trees, you know, like I said, I replaced five of them last year, so they are going to die. We'll stay on it and replace them. So I'd ask you, that's kind of an unnecessary fee if...
What about number one?
Well, how many years can I get?
Well, what if we just let you continue to do it?
Yeah, continue and inspect it, and, you know, it used to be you guys would, like, send me a letter or something if something was wrong, and I welcome that, you know? I live in the state.
That's why I asked the question.
Absolutely.
I think the inspection only came out because the bell went off that this was coming up for renewal, so they took a look at things and went, oh, you're not in compliance.
Okay.
So it's good, your nose is fairly clean for the last time.
Your aerial photography and...
That's right.
And I think the reason that we did this was that, we gave you two years at first back in 2005, just to see if you'd bring it into compliance. Gave you five years back in 2007. I think if you're following the goals that we set out, I don't see any reason why we can't make it a permanent deal.
Okay.
That's the reason I asked.
That's fine with me, yeah. I mean, we will continue, you know, to take care of things.
Mr. Chair, the reason that it wasn't made a permanent thing is because it is surrounded by other zoning, and that if you do make this a permanent thing, then permanently, whether he owns the property or Jerry sales dies tomorrow.
Right.
It will go on.
What about a more extended time than five years, then?
What would you think?
Five, okay.
Ten years, ten years is fine.
Okay.
They'll, you know...
Hell, I'll be dead in 10 years.
Hopefully not.
I'll save you some.
Well, I'll be closer, 10 years closer to death.
Yeah, I mean, I'd appreciate that.
That's a better way to look at it.
You know, and believe me, we, you know, I think we have, you know, other than a few slip-ups, done our best to take care of it.
We've got to get moving.
I have a quick one for the appellant if he agrees. On item two, I don't want to just yank the whole thing because I think what you've already done is what I want you to continue to do. Make sure the plantings remain alive. If they get, if they die, replace them.
We will.
I don't know that we need the licensed landscape architect, nurseryman thing. If we just change number two...
Oh, we'll keep doing that.
Yeah, continue to ensure that...
I don't want to pay some guy 600 bucks to come out there and tell me what I already know.
Exactly.
Jerry tells me every year, this is it. He called me on, you know, and I went by Menards and got trees and replanted, so, you know, and it's always trees, it's not bushes or anything like that, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just hate to pay some guy 600 bucks.
Too much watering or too little...
Tell me what I already know. I have to get some soil.
Okay.
That should be good.
I think he's...
Everybody else? Okay.
These two ladies came and stayed here all day. I hope you're going to listen to them because...
You know, I hate to have them sitting there all day. So I have to go through the process. So anybody else here to speak in support?
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
This case is better than opposition. Since we almost decided it.
Hi, I'm Leslie Peacock. I live at 3312 Twanah Drive, and it's, this sounds like it's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what more I can add at this point, but I just do want to reiterate, Jerry is a fabulous small business to have in the location. I mean, he does draw his business from everyone that lives around there. He's part of the fabric of the neighborhood, he always has been. I think that that shop, that building, back when it was originally a gas station, was probably there even before a lot of the homes were. I know it was there before the apartment complex were.
You're right.
Which is probably driving the current R4 zoning. So he kind of got forced into the R4 zoning, is my guess. I don't know how all of this exactly works, but I don't think any of the neighborhood neighbors are concerned about what's behind the screened fence that you can't see in any way. You can only see it from an aerial photo or if you're flying over. I'll leave that up to you guys to decide. I mean, if he's willing to pull whatever might be there out of there, I mean, that's his call. He has done a lot with Greg Robinson, the owner, to improve what's been there. You know, they've painted, they've planted, they've improved parking. I think the fenced area is an improvement. Hopefully you decide to keep it. I don't know. I guess, you know, whatever more I can say to support it, I don't know, but I think I heard, to quote Bill Gray from earlier, having people doing business in the city of Des Moines is a good thing, so let's...
You heard right.
Let's, you know, he's doing a good job. He knows the people that live in the area. I'm really impressed he can rattle off every person's name, where they live, where they work, what their occupation is, how their health is, whether they've necessarily been a past customer of his or not, but, you know, I can't even do that with some of my own[1664.66]